Life, they're the best as far as cooking.
Oh, have you eaten some of them?
Pinky's just cooking them.
Well, you've got my wife's done them, they're made from squash.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah, we've had them every once in a while.
Yeah.
She's got them good, yeah. She's a big fan of sweet potatoes, so just make them easy.
Yeah, yeah. Painful, the, the, how it's, sort of, lord, it looks like it's got pain. The brightest part on the inside, yeah.
I think my mirror is super hard to catch.
Yeah. No, it is really. They were sitting on the porch and going, oh, it smells like something.
Really? Oh, no.
Oh, that's right.
Ours were still solid this weekend when I hauled them up.
Yeah.
Now, if you make Jack's all without them, no, they, they go quick.
Yeah.
Does the deer smell that?
Yeah.
Yeah, I put some out, in some food pots, just threw some out there for them.
They're sitting in the pot.
Yeah, they didn't touch them.
Oh, yeah, they, they were just picking them up.
Probably better than passing around in the store.
Yeah.
All right, it's seven o'clock, I'll call the meeting to board, we've got a quorum present. You got a copy of the agenda in front of you? Are there any changes to the agenda?
Yes, I have one additional plan I shared with the board and correspondence this weekend for lead better construction in the amount of seventy-seven thousand, nine seventy-six, and forty-three cents. That was for the construction of the two transportation buildings, one for our Suburbans and the other one for our heavy equipment. That was the result of heavy storm damage almost two years ago now. And so that will be paid for reimbursed back with an insurance claim through music. So, less a thousand dollar deductible. So, I sent pictures out of the, of the building, they turned out, they turned out really nice.
Looks like a really nice addition.
They, they did a good job, really good.
Are there any questions to the consent agenda items? Just for clarification, under item F personnel, it says five resignations, that should say four.
Yep, correct. That's just Taylor, Karen, Dylan, and Meredith, so you're correct.
Any questions under the consent agenda items? Not, I receive a motion to approve as presented.
We'll move.
Dean, in a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Very well. Tonight, we've got Mr. Bob Watkins here with MSBA. Everybody remembers, we've hired MSBA to help us do a superintendent search. This is the second one that Bob has helped us with. So, at that, I'll let you take it away.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir, wherever you feel comfortable.
Well, sir, how are you?
I'm fine.
Good to see you again.
Yeah, you too. How are you?
Good.
Well, thanks for letting me be here. I'm a long way from home, and it's great, and it's great to be down there. Running into some old friends. I spent the day, let me just kind of bring you up where we are, bring you up to speed. MSBA, we posted the information exactly, that with two-year contract, salary commensurate experience, a doctor-preferred administrative experience required, so on and so forth, and then all that. At this point, as we were speaking tonight, maybe more after that because I didn't check today, but we have nine applications. It's, I think, four of them have some experience as a superintendent. The other five have administrative experience of various kinds. We will continue to do that. What I expect will happen, what I think will happen, and I have to tell you, boy, this Christmas break, it's come up in a hurry, but I think over the holidays, that's when a lot of people will fill in. And we close the applications on the fifth of January, which is a couple days after coming back, but it's also the opportune time for people to spend a little time to get their application and so on. I've had a couple of calls about it and so on. And I, I, if I were betting, speculating on it, I would say you're probably going to wind up fourteen, fifteen applications. That's pretty good. In this, in this day, there's not as many people that are applying, and there's an awful lot of openings out there. You were smart to get out and get ahead, because I think after Christmas, in my opinion, there's going to be a lot of, a lot of turnover and so on. We were talking about it earlier, and I just think that's what's going to happen. So, I'm glad, from your standpoint, you're going to be this far ahead in the process, because I think it'll be, I think it'll be busy. At one time in October, or whatever, it just hit like crazy, and, and so we've all been on the run. But anyway, that's good, it's good for you, it's a good place for you to be in the process, and, and we want to spend our time getting our due diligence done and our end so that we can bring you good candidates. Our role, for those of you who know, you know, you know, you know. Our role is to go through the candidates, item by item, and, and everything on there, every reference, everything that's there, we do our due diligence. We bring it to you, and given what we know, what you've told us, and by the way, I've got copies of your surveys that you filled out and looked at that, not unlike anything that I've been here today, but the, we do our best to say, these people match what we think we hear, and have the experience, have whatever it is to do the jobs that you want done. And my guess is, we'll come out of there with four, maybe five, out of the, out of the pool of candidate, that you want to interview. Now, I don't sit in on the interview or whatever, but we're going to try to give you the best people we've got with the experience and with some skills, some matchups with the things that, that you want. That's our role, that's what we do. We're already, I am already, working on recommendations and so on, and that's good, and, and we do that. As, as I say often, there's not too many advantages to being old. One of the advantages is you've been around a long time, you know a lot of people, so when you see certain things come up, you've got a pretty good idea of where they've been, what they've been doing, what they're about, and so on and so forth. I'm very partial to you all, I've told you that before, and I am. And I know several people in this area, and I, you're going to be fine, you're going to be fine, and you're going to have applications. But I'm so glad your timing is where you are right now. I've spent the day with, I can't remember who all I met with. You were with me, you were, he was with me all day, I mean, he shouldn't have been punished like that, but he should have.
We started with support staff before school was out, then we switched to certified staff after, after school, from three to four, the administration, then, then opened to the public.
Yeah, so we spent the day talking to the groups and so on, and getting feedback from them about what's important. Very pro-school, very pro-Willa Springs, as you might expect. In some cases, frustration because they just can't do enough, you could read it, and so on. And you're like lots of other school districts, you've got a lot of changing demographics, you've got a lot of, a lot of things out there, but you're pushing hard to do it. You've got to continue, you've got to continue that, and I think that's the key for where you need to be, and looking ahead and trying to push people to think three, four, five years ahead, and, and make good decisions for this, which is this place, that's where you are. So, from my standpoint, the meetings today were very preventive. I always win a lot, and, and people are very easy to talk to here and so on. So, I think you're in good shape, I think you're where you ought to be. I've got to do my due diligence and, and get back, and what we will do, and Tony, you know this, when we finish up on the fifth of January, and you all need to decide what is a good time, but I need to come back with you and sit down and then go through these applications with you, and that'll be a special work thing that we do. We'll go through every one of the applications, decide out of that, based on my recommendation, based on what we know, based on what your curiosity tells you about them, who are the people that we're going to interview out of this. Then we set up all the interviews for you. We give you all the information in this book here about your check sheets, questions, sample questions, evaluation sheets, everything that you need to know to do it, and then we'll set it up for you, we'll set up the interviews, time schedules and everything, let you concentrate on that. When you finish the interview process, and if you come to a consensus, then, Tony, you call me and, and let me call the candidate, say they're willing to offer you a job, are you willing to accept it? Then they say, yes, I'll call you back, and you can make the official offer. That works very well for a sub. That's, that's where we are, that's, at this point, exactly the way I think it will take place. I'm anxious to see how many applications actually come in. But I've been around a long time doing this, I think this is a hundred and sixty-five. I, I think you'll be in that fourteen, fifteen, or sixteen, and that's where you need to be. Questions? Any of them?
Yeah, I've got a few, just for clarification for this board, because, you know, most of them haven't been through this process before, and I don't remember exactly. So, we close on January fifth, and then we need to set up a time, like you just said, to, for you to come back down, we go through all of the applications. How long in between that January fifth closing, and how much time do you need to get your stuff ready before you meet with the board?
Not more than a week.
A week?
Yeah. I'm working on, frankly, right now.
Sure, sure.
And, and I will be as they come in. Now, I don't know since holiday break if all of a sudden we'd ever, but I need a week in there to put everything together.
Okay. Will we have access to the applications before you come down, or will we have them that day?
You'll have them that day, because I don't know who's coming in on that last minute.
Right.
I don't know why they do it, but there'll be some people that'll sit there and sit there and push the button until one minute before midnight on the last day, you know, I want to wring their neck, but that's the way it is. I don't care. But anyway, they, they, but they'll do it. So, I'll gather them all up, and I'll bring them down, and, and then you all, if you want to, can make, can make copies of the applications, spend some time reading for the interviews or whatever, and I wouldn't take all of them, because there's some probably, you know, whatever. But the ones that are, that you want, then you need to go through them, you can read them, so on, as long as you absolutely understand that we're dealing with, with very confidentiality status here. In other words, don't leave them hanging, sorry about that.
No danger of that here.
Quick chance.
But we will, at that meeting, we will determine then, we will get the applications that day, look at them, and decide who we're going to interview.
Yes, sir.
Okay?
Yes, sir.
All right. I've had some questions from some teachers about the process already, as I'm sure some of you others probably have. A couple of things have kind of come to light to me, I don't know if they brought them to you today or not, where, you know, with, how your meetings went with them.
Yeah.
There's some of the, I feel that there's some of the teachers that feel like they want to meet with the board at some point to discuss what they want in a superintendent. I was under the impression that's kind of what you should have done today, that's why we hired you. Have you run across this before? What do you recommend at that point?
Well, here's, and I think this discussion, correct me if I'm wrong, but yeah, that came up, that definitely came up. Now, look, when you're dealing with this information, and I can tell you from experience and school hard knocks, you've got to be very, very careful. I pointed it out to them, the confidentiality piece in this gets really complicated. And the info, when I put my application into you, I'm assuming that you, as the seven elected members of the board for this community, are the ones that are going to see. I don't want it spread out all over the place, and I don't, and, and it'll cost you candidates, it always has, every time you open that up too much, it costs you candidates. So, you have to be very careful of that piece of it. If you, if you get too involved in the process, and I know that the question always comes up, can we, you know, somehow or somewhere? Unfortunately, under Missouri statutes and so on, you're the only seven ones that really count in this process in terms of being able to vote and do that. That's your responsibility. You know, you've heard them all say forever that your job's to hire a superintendent, and literally, that's it. And, and that's what you get to do. And, and, but because of the sensitive nature, we have to be very delicate about doing this. Opening it up too much, it, it, it's, it can cause you, I've, I've had candidates that will pull out, because they don't want that spread out all over the place. And it's delicate, but that's the way it works. I don't know if I answered that or not.
Well, we got off just a little bit.
The other piece about meeting with and so on.
Yeah. Ahead of time, candidates not involved.
You know, that's, hopefully, that's what I did today.
Okay.
You know, I spent a lot of time, I think, and I don't think there was anyone left that didn't get a chance to speak. And, and the idea about board members going in, talking to staff and so on came up, was mentioned specifically. But I think the process works better if it goes through me. I said I'll mention it, but I think it goes better. We've got a handle, I think, on what is important. I, I feel that we're also learning the time factor now. I didn't realize, frankly, today, there's only, what, four days left, and you're out of here until after January first anyway. It's going to be very difficult to get into any kind of stance like that endowed if you can, frankly. I wouldn't, I would not. I, I think that's what we're doing, we're gathering the information, and I think you have.
That's what we spent our money for.
I hope so.
Okay, all right. So, when you come back in January to visit with us, you'll let us know, that's when you'll tell us, hey, I met with this group, this is what they said, this, you'll, you'll share that information with us in January?
Oh, yeah. You'll have it at a time, I'll, I'll get it to you in the comments that I have and so on, but, you know, as I look back on it, thinking about it, so on, I don't know any question there that hasn't been asked before. That, that you all, and I will say this, I think I said it today several times, but you all, like most districts, are a changing district. You've got, you've got some needs, you've got, you've got, your free and reduced lunch counts going up, you've got a little poverty than you have dealt with maybe in the past. Doesn't look the same as it looked many, many years ago. This is not the same, it's not the same. We don't know where we're headed. With all the pandemic, found out that, you know, trying to get kids instruction and all that kind of stuff changed the way a lot of us thought and so on. And I think you've got some real things to deal with, and the best thing you can do, best thing you can do, hire a dreamer a little bit. You've got to hire somebody who runs the bit, but you're also going to have to dream and look different. You're going to have to look different, and that's just the way it is. There'll be a lot of changes, a lot of changes to your population, it's just different. And you're going to have to, you're going to have to spend some time with this administrative group, the new superintendent, whatever, have to spend some time talking with teachers, talking with the administrators, talking about some issues, schooling yourselves on the best things that are out there, and really think about that. And I think that came out today pretty clear, things pretty clear. So, I, that, did I muddle that up enough so that no one can understand it?
Yeah.
That's what I, but I think, I think that's, I think that's where you are.
Okay. That's all I have, I've kind of dominated the conversation here, so if any of the rest of you have any questions for him.
I just, I just, just to clarify your answer to that question of Tony's, it is of your opinion that we need to meet with the new superintendent and the administrative group at that point and understand what the issues are that we're going to be facing versus, versus find that out right now? Is, is that what you're, I just want clarification on what you're saying.
No, I, I want to summarize what I heard is the issue, as a lot of the issues, not all, and there's a lot of issues today, give that to you. I want you to make, when you're sitting down deciding on a new superintendent, I want you to have those and say, you know, to yourself, is this the person that can lead us to this place? Second part I was saying is, when the new superintendent comes in, and, and I think you need to pay some attention to the teachers, to these administrators, to others, and set yourself in motion, a good plan of action of where you're going to go, and start looking three years down the road. You know, there's some things that you can do maybe, but you need to be thinking, thinking down the road, got to have a little bit more of a strategic plan of operation, I think, because, because you're changing pretty fast. And it's easier, it's easier to stay the same. We all know what to expect, it's easier to stay the same. But, and you've got a lot of teachers that are worried about it, you know, about kids, we've got mental health, we've got counseling, we've got poverty, we've got, you've got a lot of people who are concerned about those issues, rightfully so. You're going to have a lot of turnover in your staff in the next three, four, or five years, just looking down through it. So, those are the things you need to be thinking about, in my opinion. And whoever's the best person to pick up that, that current walk and carry that, and carry a flag, you've got to have that.
Anybody else?
We have a meeting on the tenth, you anticipate having a separate meeting, I'm assuming?
Yes.
So, Tuesday or Thursday or something like that? You'll send us the notes from your meetings today?
Yes.
Before the Christmas holiday?
Yes, well.
That sometime before, before the fifth, is what I'm saying.
Oh, oh, yeah, 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 I'll, I'll get, I'll get them down.
Well, we'll, we'll have that information at least to read.
Sure, and I've got lots of notes I need to, just give you some, some issues, some things that came up, and, you know, it's, it's changing rapidly, and there's so many openings out there, and so many things happening, I think.
Did we have good attendance and participation in this?
I would say forty teachers.
We have forty teachers.
Forty teachers, and most of the administrative staff, the non-certificated staff, not so many.
New at three.
Yeah, and not so many, and, who else?
Public.
Public, one.
One.
That's kind of disheartening.
Yeah.
Winter.
Yeah, I could have named that ten.
He and I go back about forty years, about a hundred. Anything else?
Anybody else got any questions? Thanks for coming out and doing that.
You are certainly welcome, it's a pleasure to be here, it's good to see you guys, one of my favorite places in the world.
We enjoy seeing you, Bob, but try not to come so often.
I, I understand that, well, at my delicate age, you know, I got to walk.
Come see you.
Thank you, thank you, see you guys.
Want to go back tonight?
I'm going to get as far as spring to.
Okay.
And then I'll worry about at least some of it tomorrow.
Good to see you.
Good to see you here, take care, thank you. See you guys, behave yourself.
All right, so we'll, I guess after the closing, we'll have to determine what day works best for everybody. I expect that to kind of be a fairly long meeting whenever he comes down and we'll go over fourteen or fifteen applications and try to determine who we're going to interview. So, I don't think we'll do that in an evening setting, I think we'll have to have a daytime meeting for that sometime.
We need to pencil that in sooner rather than later?
Probably, I'm thinking sometime there, just shortly after our board meeting, probably that week, he said he needs a week.
Yeah, from the fifth, which puts it that week. Thursday maybe, Wednesday or Thursday, whatever works best for folks.
Yeah. Everybody look at their calendar tomorrow. I'll have, Bill, you can send out a reminder in the morning, and we'll probably look at, I'm thinking like maybe that thirteenth, is there a day of the week that works better or worse for anybody? Colly, it doesn't matter, you're retired, Mac, you're out, your opinion doesn't matter.
It's off the seventy degrees or something.
Scott, does any, you make whatever work?
Yeah. You were looking at the daytime.
I think so. Don't you guys think that's best?
Yeah. I believe Friday, I've got the caps set off. Do you want to tend to the league, go ahead and set the thirteenth?
I think so.
We'll make the motion and do it at the January board meeting.
Right.
If we all kind of.
Is that, what kind of notice we have to put out, have a meeting?
What do we have? How long will notice? Two days? So, you can do it on Monday.
We can do that on the tenth and.
You can do it on Monday.
Everybody look at your calendar tomorrow for the thirteenth, and you can send out a reminder in the morning, and let's tend to, we go for that.
About what time you think?
Anybody?
Six AM?
Yeah.
Eight, eight or nine, whatever works for people, let's get it over with.
We start?
I can sleep.
I already know I've got a problem, I'm leaving the eleventh to go out of town.
For how long? You, you mean your word.
Hell, I am.
I think we've already voted on this from thirteen.
I have no way around that.
So, what do you get there?
I'll be home the night of the fourteenth.
So, the fifteenth.
The night of the fourteenth?
Fifteenth to Saturday.
Yeah.
Sixteen. Seventeen.
About the seventeenth.
Puts us two-thirds of the way through January.
Seventeenth.
You're all for it. You guys tell me, seventeenth, or do you want to do a Saturday? You said you were busy.
I got someone Saturday.
Monday.
Yeah, probably the eleventh is probably, let me talk to Bob and see if the eleventh would be soon enough for him, or enough.
You said you were leaving that.
That, that evening, I'm leaving that evening.
But we'd have to.
Oh, you're leaving that eleventh.
No, no, that is wrong, that's wrong, I feel, I know, I'm telling you wrong, I'm leaving the tenth after board meeting.
What if we did it on the tenth?
Before the board meeting? Bob can't give. Oh, yeah, he might.
Less than a week.
I'll, I'll call him in the morning, see what he says, and we'll sit down.
If we do that, then we need to set, we need to set that meeting tonight.
Well, they still can't call in the morning.
Hey, on the tenth, I'm out.
Okay, looks like it's the seventeenth.
I'll get there by night, though.
Looks like we're shooting for the seventeenth then.
We'll go ahead, and the board can set that at the January meeting. And ten o'clock, did you say you could be there till ten? I can be there at ten, I got to be in the morning.
All right. Anything else, any questions on that? All right, very good. Administrative reports, guess who's up?
That'd be me.
That's you.
Yep. Kind of anticlimactic after all that. As far as the numbers, enrollment's been good, attendance has been a little bit down this month, which is fairly typical for this time of year, and attendance in general has just been kind of down this year, and we can blame that on a variety of factors, but it's just, it's, it seems like it's getting harder to get kids to come to school, so we're going to keep working on that. Some positive notes, we had two music concerts yesterday, we had our band concert in the gym at two, and then the choir concert at the First Baptist Church for Acoustical Purposes at five o'clock yesterday evening. Also, the choir took a trip to the state capitol, singing in the rotunda of the capitol, did a really nice job there, so represented us very well, and, and both concerts were really good, well-attended, and both Mr. Cochran and Mr. Haji and Mr. Good, recovering from his heart attack, was back to conduct the jazz band, so.
Wow.
Really good day of music in the high school yesterday. Our basketball teams, girls just won tonight, so they're three and one on the season, boys are four and one, and took second in the Mansfield Tournament, so a good start to both basketball seasons. We had our Beauty and the Beast production, the Drama Club, that's kind of a volunteer drama club that Ms. Beck heads up, and they did a Beauty and the Beast production at the Star last weekend. Door decorating contest, we had that at the high school for food harvest through FDLA, it was on the elementary, the fourth grade came and, and judged our doors, and you voted for doors with a canned good, so Mr. Jackson, the Grinch, won the, the door decorating contest, so Mr. Jackson is, you would never know it, he probably doesn't want me to say it. So, Mr. Jackson is, um, you would never know it. He probably doesn't want me to say it, but he's got more Christmas spirit, I think, than anybody in the high school. So, he did a really nice job. Things to look forward to pending your approval. Tonight's lunch, we'll go back to the Bears Den. Mr. Schmidt and I are not super excited about that, but I think the kids and the teachers are. So, that's a good thing. Lunch will go back to the Bears Den. That also means return of bear time. We have a split lunch. Put freshmen and sophomores in the Bears Den for lunch and then we switch and put juniors and seniors. So, on the alternating time, we call that bear time. Um, we haven't had that since pre-COVID, but, um, we have an RTI, which is Response to Intervention Structure that the other buildings have. But, we set up, ours is a little bit different. We, we have a bear recovery for those students that are in, in need of getting things done right now. Uh, we have study hall for students that are, are struggling a little bit. And then the other bear times, we allow for enrichment activities. And we try to tailor that to maybe a passion that a teacher has, along with a passion that the kid has. So, like, Coach Forrest has one of our most popular ones, hunting and, um, farm management. And that's a very popular bear time destination. Mrs. Berry does a crochet class. So, it, it'll be fun to get back to that and some of those courses that those kids enjoy during their bear time. So, we're looking forward to that. Um, coming up tomorrow, we talked about it a little bit before the meeting, the big Christmas extravaganza. Um, I'm sure the other buildings on campus will have, uh, some, some fun as well, but we certainly want to invite you to the high school. We'll have, uh, live animals, as it's becoming our tradition, for our Christmas decorating and, and some other fun stuff. So, that'll be tomorrow, starting at 5:30. Uh, we also have a star event where a student's gonna read a, a Christmas story to some students in the commons area, some younger students, and then give them a book to take with them. So, promoting some literacy there as well. And then the end of the semester is Friday. So, it's, uh, finals week and the mad dash to the, to the end of the semester and kids trying their very best to get those grades up as high as they can get. So, that's what's happening in the high school.
Any questions for Marty? Thanks. Yep. Tina?
Alright, well, it seemed like it's been a long time ago because it was in November. It's been kind of a long month, but, um, Mr. Haji, uh, in November, did a middle school choir concert that was just middle school students. Most of the time, he, choir is combined with the high school concert. He wanted to do something that was just for our building. So, we had a middle school choir concert. It was very well-attended. And then that day, we had an open house at the middle school and we showcased student work. Um, Mrs., or Ms. Hartley had art on every wall. Um, several teachers had displays. And I have to give a shout out to my sixth grade team. They, the entire sixth grade floor was just wall-to-wall student work. And it was amazing just to walk through those halls. We had Christmas music playing. And I think most of the people came up from the choir concert and went through the building that day. We had, um, people there for over an hour. And it was just a lot of visiting, a lot of, um, kids hunting out their things and showing them to parents and grandparents. And it was a good day. They really, they did a good job with that. Several of the teachers participated in that. Um, we're, of course, playing a little basketball. We're wrapping that up, um, first part of next week. So, the girls are playing tonight and they play every night this week except Thurs-, or except Tuesday. So, we've got girls' games Wednesday night, Thursday night, Friday night, and then next Monday, Tuesday night. Um, of course, that's Tuesday tournament. And then the boys finish their season with the Mountain Grove tournament, and that's Wednesday, Monday, and Tuesday also. So, if you haven't been to see them yet, they're so much fun to watch them play. They've gotten so much better throughout the season and, um, it's just a lot of fun to, to watch them get out there every game and, and just give it all. So, we also have some, um, December activities going on with staff and students. Uh, we had a door decorating contest also last week. We put it on Facebook and let people vote on it there. And then, um, we had our, um, some student, a student team who went around and helped judge also. Mrs. White won that. We have some special activities going on for teachers and, and again, students throughout the month. Um, 12 days of Christmas, we started December 1st. And then we're going to end the semester on Friday with a drop everything in Kind Day. Kind is a verb there. And we, uh, did that last year. And some of, some teachers, teachers choose what their students are going to do that day. Some of them do random acts of kindness. Uh, some of them link it to a curricular activity and they, they teach something that's centered on that. So, um, it's just basically, it's linked to our Character Strong program and just teaching some kindness and how we can all be better people. Um, teachers have been working hard on some PD. Um, last week, we had math, social studies, and science. Um, Mr. Wagner worked with them and an RPDC consultant came in for science. And they spent some time working on what they need to focus on to help some weak math areas. Then math took a half a day and social studies took a half a day and did the same. Uh, we have a math consultant who's in, who was in the building today. She's in classrooms observing and working with those teachers. And she'll be back tomorrow and, um, starting to see some different teaching practices as a result. So, that's what we're aiming for, is to just get better as we, get better as we go every day. Uh, we have an after-school tutoring program that we're going to start when we get back from break and we're just going to remain really flexible on that. And we have it planned for four days a week. And, um, I'm going to send information out to parents over break closer to Jan-, the first week of January, so that it's kind of fresh with everybody. If you send it out too soon, they forget. So, Christmas is a lot for everybody, I think. So, um, we're just going to s- see what our numbers are and we're going to focus on, um, not just homework help, but some enrichment activities. And then, the month before math testing, we're going to have what we're going to call Math Camp. We're going to focus on some specific students and specific skills. And we're just going to, to hit it hard and do some intensive tutoring to try to help those math scores increase. Um, our student leadership teams, and I have to give a shout out to Mrs. Cottonham on that. She's doing a great job with those. That's been a really good thing. Um, it's not like student government. It's, it's just students who are trying to be leaders in citizenship and, and all of our Character Strong activities. Kindness and gratitude and just the things that make us good people. And it's, it comes as a result of our I am noticed training. And, and those kids are really, they're doing a good job. And we're hoping to expand that opportunity to more students next year. But it's, it's working out really well in our building. Uh, we did have students also who got to, luckily, um, there were a few middle school students who were in seventh and eighth grade choir who got to go to the Capitol also. They were so excited about that. Um, they asked me, like I would tell them, no. They were, Dr. Spencer, are you going to let us? Well, of course I'm going to let you. Who gets to go sing at the Capitol? You know, that's a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity. And they were so excited about that. Um, and then, of course, our, our band students also were at the band concert. But we've had a lot going on. It seems like we've crammed a lot into the last month and it's gonna be a busy week too. So, we're trying to, to finish strong and stay academically focused right up until we get them out of there on Fridays.
Any questions?
I can't, can I ask you to flesh out the math skills that you're working with, uh, consulted on? Like, are we using our math scores to do it? Or is it something that you do more than once a year?
Okay. So, I've got a couple of different things going on there. Um, so, when, when, um, Mr. Wagner met with them, they identified. So, what are content things that we need to work on? What are those Missouri standards that we need to work on in our content area? And then what are some of our, um, pedagogical things? Like, we need to do a better, a better job at science with constructive response. So, we asked an RPDC person to come in last week and she was here. There were two of them actually who were here for a half a day. And they focused strictly on helping science, um, get some things in place, some supports in place to better teach how to write a science constructive response answer. Because that's not like writing a constructive response answer in English. They want different things. So, they went kind of in-depth into that. They came up with a scoring guide that they're all going to use that's very map-focused. And then, um, they are working on CFAs, which are just formative assessments, little, little formative assessments that will focus on specific skills. Now, the math consultant that is here, she is in the classroom and she is working with every teacher on their level. My math teachers have a broad range of experience and they have a, they're, they're just, you know, every one of them is different as far as where they are in their teaching careers. Um, and so she's going in and she's, she's got many years of math experience. She's worked for DESI. She's on the National Council of the Teachers of Mathematics. She's, she knows what she's doing in those classrooms and she's watching them teach. She came in today and she modeled taught two lessons in seventh grade and fifth grade. The other teachers came in and watched her do that. And then she sits down with them. She'll, she'll do the same thing tomorrow as far as going in their classrooms. And then she sits down with them on their plan time. She gives them some very specific, focused feedback to work on. And then she comes in, she gives me, it's not an evaluative process, but she gives me a list of things to look for in each of those classrooms because it's all different depending on where they are. So, that has helped me. And when I go in, I, you know, I know, okay, I'm looking for this with this teacher. And I, I've seen the difference. The teachers are, they, it's just, they're doing things a little bit differently here and there that, that is really helping. And it's all focused on learning and engagement for students.
Are we doing enough of that? I mean, are, are, because I'm intrigued by the process. It sounds like it's something we ought to be doing. Are we doing enough of it?
Um, I have her contracted for 10 days this year. I think that's a, that's a good starting place for this year. Um, I would, last year, we had some support in classrooms. Mrs. Forrest came in and she, she is really good with pedagogy and she can go into any classroom regardless of content area and tell you some things you can do to better your teaching, regardless of your content area. And I wouldn't mind having, having her come back and do some work with some of my newer teachers. Um, she's really good at pinpointing, just, again, little things you can work on. You can't give somebody 10 things and say, here, fix these 10 big things, but you can give them some, you know, you did this. And if you did it this way instead, it won't take you any longer as far as planning or anything like that. It's, it's good support, you know? Um, they've also gotta have time to talk to each other. Those groups that met last week, half a day, so many of them came back and said, thank you for giving us that time. And it, it was hard because we had heavy sub-days last week. And you can plan it far in advance and then four teachers take off and all of a sudden, your subs are really thin. But, they all said, we needed that time together. And that time talking to each other and bouncing ideas off each other and being able to ask how, how the other one does something, that's what makes you a better teacher. I've experienced that personally when I was at the high school. And if we want those math scores to go up, yes, we've got to tutor kids and we've got to focus on those kids and building their skills. But if we build our teaching ability and make ourselves better teachers, which every good teacher wants to, and we have buildings full of good teachers, those math scores are gonna go up because we have better teaching going on. And that's what we need to do. We need to plan long-term like that rather than, you know, my fifth graders aren't gonna take a science test for another three years now. So, you know, let's build those teaching skills in those years in between and then our math scores are going to go up because our teaching's better. But yeah, that focused classroom and, and those conversations, those teachers having time to sit down and talk to each other. That's where you build your better teachers. Thank you for allowing us the opportunity to do that too.
It, there's always a lot going on in your building. I mean, you're always crying. I, I see that. Are we doing this in the elementary or doing this in high school? Because she talked about it, but I don't hear the other two buildings ever really talk about this. You guys do the same thing in your buildings or have consultants come in and where we're leading up to, it seems like we're hitting a kind of a, a deal in middle school. Is there something we can redo prior to middle school? Or are we following up in high school?
Not exactly. Um, but for instance, uh, Thursday, my third grade team went to Springfield, you know, to a conference to a specific thing. They felt like their team needed to take part in. So, um, it's more individualized in the elementary as far as teachers seeking out the PD that they feel they need to improve themselves.
We haven't brought anybody in, in quite some time. Um, but we use our own and we have departments that work frequently together. We have a common prep at every level, which is something that, that middle school unfortunately doesn't have. But we do utilize that a lot. And, um, like Bobby, we have professional development whenever we can find it. Uh, but no, we don't. We haven't brought in consultants in, in a few years.
I mean, I, I see a lot going on in her building. I, I appreciate it. All this money made sure that's happening all.
We don't wanna drop the ball. And I'm, I'm sure Bobby feels the same way. Um, if, if we see an opportunity to, to get better, we're gonna take it. And Tina's exactly right. Those are, you, we make the teachers stronger, then, then our kids are gonna be better for it. So, we're always looking for ways to improve.
And, um, the elementary's unique in that we have five teachers per grade level.
Right.
So, a team of teachers teaching the same curriculum, you know, they plan together at least once weekly. And, uh, they are so good. Um, I try to hire the best candidate possible every time. But that team of teachers, uh, I mean, they're so good. They contact that person during the summer. They get to know them. They pull them in and, I mean, they develop that new teacher. So, it's just an ongoing process every time. And I'm gonna bring up our instructional coach here during my piece. Uh, she, she does an amazing job as well, so.
Any other questions from the other school? Thank you. Bobby?
Yeah, I'll go ahead and, uh, highlight, uh, Dawn Newberry. Uh, I told you guys we're doing a staff member of the month. Uh, and she is staff member of the month for December, which was focused on teamwork. And, uh, just a reminder, that's voted on by her peers. And, uh, this is her seventh year, um, as the instructional coach. In my first year here, uh, I realized teachers needed support and they needed, uh, somewhere they could go for resources. And, uh, so, I eliminated another position in my building so that I could have an instructional coach. And Dawn has filled that. And, uh, there's a reason they voted her for teamwork. If a teacher is struggling with a certain content area or a specific Missouri learning standard, they'll call her. She'll, hey, what strategies can you come up with? She'll go in the room, model, model a lesson for them. And, uh, just whatever, manipulatives, any resources they need, uh, they can call her. And, um, I have no worries because she likes to stay busy. She will find something to do. And, uh, she was voted staff member of the month by her peers for, for a good reason. Also, field trips. Friday, we were able to send fourth grade to West Plains Civic Center for, uh, production of a Nutcracker. If you remember several years back, uh, when Three Rivers was in town, they, um, supported and funded, uh, St. Louis Company to come down a couple of times a year and, uh, give us theater productions, which were really good right here on campus, which I really liked because there was less transition time. But any opportunity we get to, uh, expose our kids to, you know, the arts, uh, we like to do that. So, uh, Thursday, we had a first and second grade Christmas concert, uh, very well-attended. I would estimate six to 700 people, probably. This is the first time we put down every folding chair we had. I don't know if you know how many we have, Bill. Uh, and they're all taken and they were still standing in the moldering. And, uh, kids did a great job. We're doing some kindness things, not one day, but just, uh, every Friday. Uh, in December, I had a staff member, Kristy Chaney, came to me. And, uh, her dream was to hand out hot chocolate. So, we made it happen. Uh, at parent drop-off, every Friday morning in December, uh, we're handing out free hot chocolate for those that who like it, who want it. And, uh, I thought it was a great idea. Uh, just show kindness to the community and it fulfilled her dreams. So, uh, you just have to share your dream with somebody to make it happen, you know? And, uh, also, our sped collection team, and I don't know if you were aware of this, Marlena, but, in the elementary, every day in December, uh, a grade-level team or a team of teachers signs up to bring in food. And I mean massive amounts of food. Well, on Friday, the sped, a week ago Friday, the sped team had signed up and they, we come in and they had decorated it all up, but the Grinch had stolen food. So, there was no lunch. So, we were kind of grumpy. But, uh, in the email I sent out, they said, you know, the Grinch stole your lunch, but, uh, we're gonna beat him. Monday, there'll be a big feast. And, uh, but they also asked colleagues to bring in uh, supplies for the, uh, for some teens in residential care. And you know the need, the least of these? Is that the actual name of it?
It is.
Yeah, the least of these. And so, they had a box decorated and it was filled on Monday with books, school supplies, uh, games, just all kinds of stuff. games, just all kinds of stuff. And we did have a massive feast. And we're not going hungry, believe me, so. Our learning loss room, that's being paid for by Esther Money. I just have to thank Josh Owens and the maintenance guys and Andrew and the tech guys. They, Andrew put up a projector out there and Josh moved all the furniture in and out. He moved some in, we're like, oh, we don't need it all. He moved it back out. And it is ready to go when we come back from break. Just a reminder, Don Newberry's heading that up along with Brenda Kimbrough. And then each grade level interventionist for second and third grade. Second grade would be Anita Ellis, third grade Brenda Jackson. And they're going to work in very small groups, working on specific skills that those students unfortunately fell behind on during the last couple of years, so. And one thing upcoming, and I have to thank Chris Wagner for helping me out. Grades three through eight, every student takes the math test at the end of the year in high school. Our students will take multiple end-of-course exams. K-2, no, we don't assess them at the end of the year. And that's, I feel, is the most critical point in education. And my personal philosophy, if we're going to retain a student, it should be preferably K-1, maybe second grade at times. And so Chris found USA Test Prep. We were on a couple of Zoom meetings. And this is going to allow us to assess our kindergarten through second grade students at the end of the year. And just give us another piece of data to help us determine what gaps they might have and if they're ready for the next grade level. Grades is not the sole thing to go on. They, they're not always, a student may get a C minus or a D or whatever. This will be more specific to the Missouri learning standards and we can make that determination. And as you might imagine, a lot of parents are very hesitant to hold their kids back. So the more data and that we can show them that, hey, they're just not ready for the next grade level, the better, more likely we are to convince them that that's best for our student. And it's not always productive to say, hey, we're retaining them no matter what because they're probably going to change districts or homeschool or something like that, so.
What grades are those for, Bobby?
USA Test Prep, which is a bonus, which is great, it's actually K through five. And K-2, it will be math and reading. Correct me if I'm wrong. And grades three through five will be all four core areas, so.
Math and reading, three and four?
K-2 is math and reading.
K, K-2, sorry.
Yeah, and three through five will be social studies, science, math, reading. And we actually got a bonus. We signed up by November 30th and we got this year and next year for the price of one year, so. And it was very reasonable. Shockingly, so.
How much? How much?
Forty-nine hundred.
Only five hundred of that shipping.
Yeah.
Delivered online.
All digital, so.
Any questions for Bobby? Thank you. Alaya?
We've been working hard all year. I know that I talked to you a little bit about our new way we're monitoring progress for special ed students. It's exciting to see how the staff have been excited about having more data to make decisions about our special ed students and decisions they make on instruction and placement off of that. And I found out that I've got some data nerds at the end of this that they really like seeing that weekly versus what they have been used to. Like Mr. C had mentioned, this fed staff has been working. We're, we're down a few from what we had last year, partially because of quality of applicants that we've had on the paras and that type of thing. So we've been pretty creative on how we're getting roles covered and surviving barely. But we do have, the ones we do have are fantastic. You know, like he was talking about, Mrs. Chaney, I don't have a pair. I don't think that really doesn't go above and beyond. And they truly are here. It's not for the pay because they make little to nothing, but it's because they love kids. And that, that shows in what they do in the classrooms and the things they come up with. We've been working on, Mr. Wagner and I have been working on things for our December one count, for our December cycle that I think he's ready to submit if he hasn't already over the past few weeks. And child count for special ed, I know that I had mentioned this last year. We were at close to 18% special ed population. State average is about 13%. It was an area that was identified in need that we needed some improvement. And Mr. Hall had expectations of me to get some of those things fixed. We've been working on it. Our numbers last year were about 220 special ed students identified in district. As of our December one child count, when we report that, we have 199. So we're on the right track of making the improvements for the state. With that, we also have, total, we have 212 in district, but 12 of those are early childhood students. And I think we had even mentioned this before. You typically like to see your numbers for that K-12, like close to the state average, that 13% that the more early childhood kids you can identify. Usually they like that number to be larger because we're doing early intervention. So we've been implementing a few new strategies to try to improve our early childhood numbers as well. We started doing a little bit different thing through our, our current process coordinator, Melissa Alterman in the district that she worked at before. She had tried this method and it worked very well for them. I think we've tried it this year and it's proven successful. We're calling it Diagnostic Teaching Placement. And a student that we are considering evaluating for early childhood special ed, they go ahead and enroll. We could, we serve students as early as three-year-olds for early childhood program. So we have them to complete the enrollment process. We go ahead and bring them in, get consent to test. And they're actually in our early childhood program for a period of two to three weeks while we're doing the assessment piece. So we can actually get our eyes on them and our early childhood teacher is able to complete some assessment with them that way. Otherwise, it's usually like a parent survey when we place our students for early childhood. You'd ask the parent the questions, can they do these certain type of skills? Which is usually a yes or no. And sometimes those are not very accurate compared to what we actually see when they're in a school setting. So it's allowed us to actually get our, our eyes on some kiddos. The earlier that we can intervene in some of those skill gaps, the better. So we have grown our numbers. We started the year with six students and we're up to 12. So it's been successful so far trying it this way.
Any questions?
Bill, just a general question. Do we have any, do we need to have any plans for early childhood beyond what we offer now? If, if early childhood becomes something that we are going to be doing, are we prepared to do it?
Not right now. I think we need to have some conversations about what that looks like. I think we need to be looking in long-term of our universal preschool and, and providing that for every four-year-old in our community and our school system. But that would involve both space and the provisional staff and funding, of course. So, but those are conversations we need to be having right now. I've always been an advocate for universal preschool, but it's finding the resources to make it happen because it can get pretty expensive very quickly. You know?
Yeah, just seems like it may be coming our way.
I, I believe we'll be with that. I hope the resources come our way, too.
Well, I do, but just regardless, I mean, we need to have, we need to have a plan.
Absolutely.
One way or the other, whether we have the opportunity to execute it or not.
And oftentimes with that, the school districts have entered partnerships with Head Start. And they focus more on the younger kids and they do less of the cogits of work. So if we can get all the four-year-olds to have it, they can do all the three-year-olds. I think it would, it would be a good partnership and they could transition into a four-year-old program. So there's things that we can do to work together. Or I've seen programs where you had, had, that you would share kids. And like half the time, a teacher would go over to Head Start and work with students, a certified teacher. Because the staff they have right now aren't certified.
Right.
So I think there's creative things that you can do with the existing facilities that you have. But still get involved more personnel.
I was talking to Moss about his operation out there, which is interesting, but doesn't offer transportation, which is a limiter for.
Correct.
Currently with that, our, our early childhood special ed staff, we do partner with Head Start right now. I have, we either share students, they come half a day to our program, have a Head Start. Or I send, usually it's the related services like speech or language that I send them to the Head Start building.
So you're, you're identifying those kids over there, too. That's good.
Any other questions from our land? Thank you. Chris, have you got anything to add tonight?
No, not, not really. I wasn't planning on speaking, but I feel like, I feel like I've, between Thanksgiving break and conferences, I've been gone more than I have been here. But went to, last month, I went to the federal programs conference up at Tantera or Margaritaville, whichever one you want to call it now. And, and had a, had a great series of sessions up there, learned quite a bit more about what's coming up with M-6. Wasn't some, wasn't some very popular talk that they delivered, that DESI delivered to the schools. But, but nonetheless, we're going to be, we're going to start probably after Christmas break, attending sessions where we're going to learn more about specifically what data are they going to collect starting this spring? So, so I'll be addressing you guys probably, I'm going to say around March, about what that's going to look like because we don't know what it's going to look like yet. So that, that's probably the biggest takeaway that I could share with you right now. As far as what, what all, probably, probably the one thing that concerns you all the most as a board was that, was that one session. And it was some, it was some very interesting things. And we're, we're probably going to have to do a lot more surveying of parents, of students, teachers than we've ever had before in the, in this next cycle of M-6. So I just, I just wanted to give you that heads up. Went to, went to, get ready to go to the, in January, myself, a few of the high school teachers, Dr. Spence, myself, we're going to go to the Powerful Learning Conference. That'll be at the end of January up at, up at Tantera. And they're, they have some excellent speakers from around the state. Probably one of the biggest conferences outside of the Go-CSD Summit that's held in, in the state of Missouri. So that's, that's always a great event and first time in two years we've been having to do that. But I, I've just been very excited between, between my sessions as a curriculum director and, and being, and, and a track coach as well, just being able to go out and network with other schools. Again, we haven't been able to do that in a couple of years. And, and now that we're opening back up, it's, it's been great to be talking to other schools about what they're doing and, and, and how, how they're going to progress through some of the things that we're being ready to as well, so.
Any questions for Chris? Tantera probably sounds more appropriate for this setting.
Yeah, it's probably, probably. We love the name, though.
Yeah, all right, thank you. Bill, have you got anything else for any?
No.
All right, move on to the Safe Return to In-Person Instruction Plan.
Yes, and I had a link the description in your packet. Hopefully you've had a chance to kind of review that. There, there's so many dynamics involved, what's going on right now at the state level. Everyone's aware of the court case. Basically, what they've done in the court cases, they've ruled that the state health department. And then by inference, then all of our local health departments do not have the authority to be doing masking orders. And they even reference quarantine orders and things of that nature if they were given that direction to school districts. And so they basically stripped them of that authority. And by doing that, and, and within the, the court case itself, it kept referring to they are non-elected personnel. And as non-elected personnel, they do not have the authority to be making these decisions. So by inference then, who are the elected personnel who can? That would be our local Board of Education, all right? So what's happened is they, they've basically placed this squarely in your lap. We're ill for will or nil to try to resolve this at the local level. So that's why we have school districts pretty much across the state that are reviewing their safe return plans right now. I know the ones in the area just had a conversation with Superintendent Mount and Grove today about what they're doing with their plan. And so likewise, we did the same thing. Now, this particular plan, you will become very familiar with this because this is going to be a standing monthly agenda item. And they recommend, they being the school attorneys that I've worked with, that I've talked, that I visit with, is they say, whatever you do, make sure that the school board approves it. And not only that the school board approves it, but that you're following whatever the school board told you to do. Because that's where it's sitting right now.
So we're health experts at this point?
Well, I guess that's the case. That's what the court case is making you to be, all right? However, I still think that in the process of doing this, because I, folks, I'm not, I'm not a healthcare expert. You know, I've, I've been in education a long time, but not in health services. And looking around the table, I'm not seeing any others who here who are health experts, right? So I think we still need to fall back and rely, are you a health expert? So I think we need to, to the extent possible, I think we need to fall back on the people who are health experts, who have a career in, in health services. And that, let them give us some direction on the best way to go. Do what we can to take the politics out of this mess. Because the politics are, are just really making it very, very difficult right now. So with that in mind, I, I've asked Michelle to come today. And, and I appreciate Michelle leading up, not only, not only in the school nurse's office, because the last year and a half, almost two years, has been absolutely crazy for, for that department and everything that they've had to adjust to with COVID and just the day-to-day things that they're expected to do. So I appreciate Michelle, you and your staff and what you're, what you're able to accomplish. Also appreciate that Michelle heads up the Health and Wellness Committee, which is also the committee that is reviewing our Safe Return to Instruction Plan. And Mac sits on that committee. And I appreciate Mac being, being part of that as a board member representative as well. We met last week and, and the timing on this could not have been worse. The, the decision came out over the, over Thanksgiving holiday. But the impetus on this was when the Attorney General sent his letter out last week, like last Tuesday of last week, basically ordering all health departments and by inference, all school districts from doing any type of masking mandate, quarantines or whatever, right? He says, that is to stop now. Well, it's not really now because the court order isn't final yet until December 22nd. There is still possibility, there could be an appeal, the judge could stay it for whatever reason. So it doesn't actually become final until December 22nd. However, the Attorney General has alluded to the fact that after December 22nd, when it is official, he will combat any school districts who still have masking mandates in place. There's an article in the Springfield Newsletter where they're not planning on taking their masking mandates out till, they're going to have it through January, even knowing that the Attorney General isn't going to be happy with that. You know, so I think you're going to see a lot of politics going on in the next 30 to 60 days and seeing how this thing plays out. Now, that being the case, we had a really good meeting, I thought, last week with the Health and Wellness Committee where we reviewed the plan. Didn't help us out because we're still trying to digest the court order. We have like three days before board meeting. So this thing is kind of changing as we go, all right? And that's why it's going to be a monthly conversation here because I can see us continue to adapt this plan the way we want it, all right? However, as we had that conversation on the committee, and Mac can certainly speak on behalf of the board, Michelle as well, the general consensus was we want to move away from contact tracing. We just, we just want to go a different direction. We see that there's too, we're sending home too many healthy kids just because they may have been close to a, to a positive contact. And the amount of school that our kids, that our kids are losing because of that, we just, we've got to do something different. And so as I said, when I set the plan out, I, I think if I can get the board to a point where let's agree what we all agree on and then let's hammer out what we need to talk about, okay? Because as I go through here and if we went through the plan, a lot of these things, I think the two crux issues, and correct me if I'm wrong, because if there's another issue that any one of you would like to talk about, I think that's great. But the two crux issues is what happens when we have positive contacts? And how are they excluded from school? And if you go through this, there's no mention of quarantine anymore. All the quarantines are out, all the oscillations out. Because we don't quarantine, we can't quarantine. By statute, all we can do is, is exclude them from school, okay? So that's what we're doing here. So the, the crux of the issue is what happens when we have a positive case and how are those kids treated? And on the other hand, the, the one area that kept coming up are household contacts. Even in this case, household contacts, how, how do we handle that? Because I'll tell you what, our relationship with the health department now is different. Because when Michelle worked with them directly for the last almost two years, they were hand in hand, I mean, partners on everything. And she, they would call her, they would say, we have these kids, we've got contact trace, we've got the numbers. They're, they are really taking a step back from this now. And the amount of information that Michelle's going to receive from them moving forward is limited, all right? They will inform us if we have a positive case, but really not much more beyond that, all right? So it, we're always going to follow our school nurses into this board. So we're always going to follow our school nurses into this board to come up with a plan on how we're going to navigate this the rest of the way, given the legal issues that are involved now, alright? So within this, I mean, most everything in here is just those two issues. The rest of it is, is everyone okay with turning the water fountains back on?
Yes.
Alright, is everyone okay with going back to regular meal patterns?
Yes.
We're all good with that, alright? So what I want to do is spend time talking about the issues that I think we'll probably need to talk about. The one that has to do with, if we have a positive case, and I think it's over on page nine. And I probably just get to put it up on, you guys will have the document, let me put it up on the screen. And I have asked Michelle to be here too, to give her input, because as I said earlier, she's a healthcare professional. I view her as a healthcare professional. She's an expert. She knows a lot more about this stuff than I do, so. Alright, basically here is on the bottom of page eight, and it says return to school after exclusion. We scratched out everything that referenced CDC guidelines. And we, instead of that, put in those who have tested positive for COVID-19, and those experiencing symptoms consistent with COVID-19 but have not been tested may return to school when all of the following are met. We crossed out all of number one, and we still have basically three different criteria they have to meet before they come back. One, they have not had a fever for at least 24 hours, one full day without the use of medicine that reduces fevers. That was already in the plan. Two, other symptoms have been proved, for example, when you cough or shortness of breath. That was already in the plan. The piece that we added was that at least 10 calendar days have passed since the symptoms first appeared. Or the individual provides a doctor's note stating the date a student or staff member may return to school. And we did that, did it that way, because not everyone may have access to a doctor, for cost reasons or whatever. So if they, if they don't want to go that route, as long as the kid stays out 10 days, which is right now for a positive, which is what that is. Comments on that?
Yep, I'm going to back up here.
Okay.
Michelle, what are the symptoms of COVID-19?
Oh, they're listed in here.
Yeah, I'll go up to that one, right there.
Those are some of the symptoms.
Okay, so the first sentence that you read to us, and those who have tested positive for COVID-19, and those experiencing symptoms consistent with COVID-19. So if a kid comes in with cough and says he's got diarrhea, we're going to send him home and tell him he's on COVID-19 protocol?
If you'll turn to your pathway, there's a pathway in there.
Okay.
It tells you.
I don't think I've got it printed out.
Talk about the chart?
Yeah.
I can't really understand the chart.
Unless you use it all the time, it is hard, but it will kind of answer some of your questions there. So basically what we do in the nurse's office is there are things that we consider major symptoms and things we consider minor symptoms when someone comes in. So say someone comes in with just a cough, we're not going to send them home for just a cough. However, if that cough progresses over several days, and it's accompanied by several other symptoms, and it's not going away, then yeah, it's probably something we're going to call a parent about. If they have a fever, they're going home anyway.
Sure.
But if it's just a fever with no other symptoms, fever free for 24 hours and return. Just vomiting, same thing, home until they're feeling better, 24 hours is what we've been doing for vomiting too since COVID. But if they come in with a loss of taste or smell, or they come in with a fever, cough, and sore throat, so several symptoms kind of clustered together, that's when we're more concerned, and that's why we follow this kind of.
Okay, so the call, whether or not they're going home or not, will come down to the nurse's office, is that correct? You all will be the ones that determine whether these are COVID, possible COVID kids or not?
Yes.
Okay.
But if kid, mom calls, says the kid is vomiting, whatever, and she says, taken off for 10 days, it's excused according to your deal, we probably.
Well, we haven't had that happen. Usually we'll have parents call, and they'll tell us what the symptoms are. And if they list several major symptoms, like I didn't mention, we'll say they need a doctor's note to return. Or if they choose to, if they can stay out 10 days. We've had some people say they have a fever, but you know, we haven't witnessed it in the nurse's office. This is for things other than COVID. They'll bring them in, we'll go outside and check their symptoms. If they're running a fever, we'll go and excuse them if they want us to check them and excuse them instead of getting a doctor's note. We've done that before too. If that makes sense.
I got a question. Is the flu and the COVID, they're both pretty close as far as symptoms there? Is that the appropriate amount of time for the flu as well? I mean, if you see those symptoms there, and you say, listen, you need to go to the house for, is that the right span for that as well?
Yeah, in our booklet, we have a booklet that's got that there. It's from the Department of Health, and it lists every possible condition you can absolutely think of, except for COVID, because it's new, it's not either. But for example, ones that is 24 hours fever-free, about the use of medication, and bringing up other symptoms.
I'm talking about the 10 days.
10 days?
How are you going to differentiate between flu symptoms and COVID symptoms, and whether you send somebody home for 10 days for COVID, or send them home for the flu? I mean, is that appropriate for the flu as well, 10 days?
I mean, it's going to have to be. I mean, I can't, I can't test for it in my office.
But can we test for COVID?
I can't test for COVID.
I didn't see anything in there that indicated we were testing for COVID though.
At this point, we're testing for students and for, not students, for staff and children of staff. We haven't made the jump to test students yet. That's something that we can talk about doing, but at this point, we haven't started doing that yet.
How many students do you think would fall into this, I'm going to send you home for 10 days because you got a cough, a fever, and a shortness of breath? I mean, is that something we can test our way out of? Or is it such a big problem that we're never going to get enough tests to do it?
I, we don't see it that often, to be honest.
That's what, that was the sense that I was getting, is that with a handful of tests each week, we can short-circuit the whole flu thing, test them when they come back.
One of the things we might want to consider, alright, because now I think it's more feasible, if we're not going to do contact tracing, is maybe look at a test to stay option for those kids who are maybe symptomatic, right? And you know, if it's flu or whatever, that might be an opportunity to give them the option of staying in school to do a test to stay. Or on the household contacts, which might be another option. If they're symptomatic, and you can't determine if it's flu or not flu, but then they would have to have three negative tests in a seven-day period, right? And, but even if they're still symptomatic, you're not going to let them stay.
Why do they have to have three negative tests?
That's the test to stay option, is that right, Michelle?
Part of the test to stay option to participate requires that you be asymptomatic throughout the duration of the testing. And it does require three negative tests within the first seven days of quarantine in order to stay, as well as being, or wearing a mask when you're there.
Who's requiring those that?
That is, that was an option.
The state health department.
Put forth the.
The ones that we just said can't set the rules anymore?
So that was, that was previously, so the options to stay in school, like ways you can stay in school, both parties wearing a mask, if you're greater than six feet away, if you're vaccinated. Another option they came up with was the test to stay option. So if you, there were several schools that utilized it, I think Houston did for about a month, and it got to be too much, because there were so many kids.
So many cases.
Yeah.
That's right, you were talking about.
That's what I talked about last time I was here.
Nurse to you to even joke with it.
So, but part of that is being asymptomatic. So we're offering, you know, if you bring a doctor's note, you can come back. But there's no way I can tell, there's no way you can tell if it's COVID or if it's flu unless you have a test. So if they choose not to go to the doctor, my only other option is they're out 10 days. There's nothing else I can do.
We can't test them.
Unless we offer the test to stay option.
If they're having symptoms, it doesn't matter.
No, no, I mean, I mean the ones that went home, we sent them home with symptoms.
Yeah.
They didn't get a doctor, they got three symptoms, could be flu, could be COVID, we got no way to tell. They get better, can they come back and take a test and go, yeah, that's definitely not COVID? Or do they have to just wait 10 days?
They can bring a doctor's note saying they can return before those 10 days are over.
But if a doctor's not available to them, we can't do anything.
Then I can't do anything.
We can't unless they're tested.
Not if they're having symptoms, I can't.
No, no, again, this is, the symptoms are over. I'm looking at the 10-day window is what I'm looking at.
So if they're having symptoms, they need to be out for 10 days unless they bring a doctor's note. Because my tests, they are accurate, but if they're having symptoms, I've had it happen a couple of times where, with staff especially, where we've tested, it's negative, they're still having symptoms a few days later, we test again, and it's positive. So if they're having symptoms, I think they'll like they need a doctor's note to be out for the 10 days.
But I think Dean might be suggesting that what happens if they're out 10 days? They go, because they're symptomatic, whatever.
Yeah.
They go four days, they're better, the symptoms are gone, they don't have a fever no more. I think Dean was getting at, can we somehow offer them a test to get them back sooner? Or is it cut and dry at 10 days?
Once the symptoms are gone, they're not symptomatic anymore.
It's our decision whether it's 10 days or not.
If that's what y'all want to do, I mean, it's up to that.
Well, I'm curious, how are we, how are we told, you talk to lawyers, right? On this, you've got advice. Okay, so we're told no masks, no quarantine, but then we're now making the decision. And I'm not suggesting that we don't have people go to the house if they're sick or whatever, but are we not quarantining kids by?
I think that's the deal, is quarantine.
Quarantine is a word we shouldn't be using.
That's a medical term.
That was for healthy kids.
But quarantine implies that we control everything they do with their life when they're not at school. So when we say you're quarantined, you go stay in that house for 10 days or don't you move? We have no authority to do that, you know? I mean, if we send them home, they go out of the, we don't have any authority to make them stay home. We do have the authority to exclude them from school. We have every authority to do that, especially if they're contagious, communicable, or they have the liability to transmit, and that's actually in the statute.
Correct.
So if there's, if they have symptoms, then they have the liability to transmit, which means that alone is enough to exclude them from school, alright? Now, I think, and there are some schools that are using the test to stay option, and, but I, as I'm sitting here thinking about it, if and when we decide to do that, I'm not sure it's applicable toward the positive cases.
No.
And it's not applicable toward the kids that are asymptomatic, right? Because they're not going to be excused anyway.
Are you talking about households or?
No, I'm just talking about just kids, just, you know, if there's a positive case, because it says here, those who have tested positive for COVID-19 and those experiencing symptoms consistent with COVID-19 but have not been tested, may return to school and all following are met. So if they're showing symptoms, is there any point in giving them the test to stay option? Because they should be out anyway.
Anybody who's got the symptoms, they can't go to school for any reason, I mean, that's always been that.
So the test to stay option wouldn't be applicable there. The option where we might look at it is the household contacts.
Yeah, and I did talk to West Plains today. For their household contacts, and I talked to the health department as well, their unvaccinated household contacts at West Plains are being allowed to stay in school as long as they are asymptomatic, and they're doing the test to stay to keep those kids in school. Everyone else.
So they're testing while they're in school still?
Yes, so their household contacts, say mom is positive, and she has several kids. None of them have symptoms. The vaccinated kids, they're fine to come to school. The unvaccinated kids, they do test to stay, so three negative tests within the first seven days of their quarantine, and they're coming to school the whole time. They are wearing a mask though. If they do develop symptoms at any time during that period, they're sent home. And then they have to follow up with their doctor because they have a positive case in the household, so.
How do you feel about that option, Michelle, the test to stay on the household contacts?
I think it's a good option. It's a way to keep kids in school. And I think anything we can do to keep kids in school is a good idea.
And I know when we first started talking about tests to stay about a month or so ago, that's when we were still doing contact tracing.
Yeah.
So the overwhelming side of that was what happens if you had 20 close contacts, and they all decided to do the state, test to stay option, right? I mean, that would be overwhelming for you to not only test all those kids, but track the results, right? But we're taking contact tracing out of the equation now. So the numbers should be much lower.
Yeah, we're still going to contact trace positive cases at school. We're just going to make a phone call, but that's what y'all approve.
And that was something, we talked about that at the committee, that if we find out there's a positive, that it would, that out of your office, you would make every attempt to contact a parent of a potential close contact, just so that they can keep an eye on their son or their daughter to make sure they're not going, they're not starting to show symptoms, right? Just as a matter of courtesy.
Yeah, parents should be doing that anyway. They should be, but this just gives them an extra incentive that maybe their kid was exposed, please watch them a little more closely than maybe you normally would, just to watch for symptoms.
How would look, so there's a parent in the household, and they come, they have, they test positive, or whatever. Does the health department notify you that that parent?
No, and that's the kicker. So with Texas County, last time I talked to them last week, they weren't going to notify me of a positive or any close contacts, nothing. That's up to the individual to notify us.
Are they going to notify children that are positive?
Nobody.
Not even children?
No, no, so that's, that's going to be hard to do because.
Well, I mean, even in Howe County though, I mean, if there's a, if a mother that has nothing to do with the school district other than her children are in there, you're not going to be notified whether she's got.
No, and I talked to the health department about that today. They're still, they're trying to get some guidance from the health department, the state department health, and they can't get a return call. I've tried to reach out myself since last week, and I have not been able to get a return call as well.
But see, the issue here though is really, it's big. I mean, it's one of the realities here, because, you know, they don't feel like they have the support. So now all of a sudden, if they're going to start sharing information with school districts, that's very close to a HIPAA violation, you know, especially if it's, say, somebody who's not even connected to the school district. You know, so yeah, they're running for cover now too. And the fact of the matter is, we've got different health departments doing different rules now. So we've got, yeah, three different health departments you're working through.
Yeah, and they're all different. Now, Howe County will send me a letter, they, at first they weren't going to send me anything, and today they've come up with something that they're going to send me for a positive case only. That's a student or staff member.
They are going to tell us.
For Howe County, not for Texas County.
I mean, that's by far the large percentage of our students, right?
Yeah, so if a student or staff member tests positive, they will send me a letter for that individual when they are recommended to return. Now, nobody in the household, nobody.
Yeah, no, I get that piece, but I thought they should notify us about students, sure.
Yeah, Howe County will, Douglas County was up in here when I talked to them. I had a case this week with them, or last week. They weren't sure yet, they were still trying to decide, Texas County. It's just going to be done in our system with their residents until we hear different. It's just going to be kind of hard to keep track of all of those people.
So the household thing's nearly non, a non-issue.
It's a sibling issue.
Yeah.
Only a sibling issue, right? So if you got, if you get notified by the health department of Howe County that you have a student that's positive, then you have to look at the siblings, right?
Yes.
I mean, that's, that's what you're going to do.
Yes, and I can see.
I say you, I say you to them, but I mean you to you.
Yeah, and you know, on their profile, it'll say who their siblings are.
Right.
But you have to remember to, and the health department found this out when they would contact trace cases. And that's why it says in the plan, will be, the household contacts will be dealt with on a case-by-case basis, because you have parents that are split, and you have, this kid is with this parent for this amount of time, and this kid is here, they might not have met, so there's so many dynamics to take into account when you're trying to figure out if this sibling has been around this sibling during their infections period. So that's why it says, because honestly, I can't go down that page and list every possibility that there could be. And again, Howe County was doing it one way with household contacts, back when they were doing it. Texas County was doing it a completely different way. They weren't quarantining household contacts if the parents said, well, they really haven't spent that much time together. So again.
They just use the same fork.
It's just a really varied way of doing things. I'm not, I don't like gray areas, I like black and white. Of course, that's an area where you just aren't going to have black and white, so just got to do it as best you can.
So is everyone comfortable with the wording at the bottom of page eight, top of page nine, nine about at least the 10 calendar days that passed since the symptoms first appeared, or the individual provides a doctor's note stating the date a student or staff member may return to school?
So I think what Dean, a question was, so a kid has symptoms, he's home. And let's say four days later, he's better.
Symptom-free.
Symptom-free. So he can go get a doctor's note and come back before the 10 days, correct?
A doctor could release them to come back before the 10 days, yes.
But only, but only a doctor.
Nope, nurse practitioner.
Oh, no, a nurse practitioner works too. Yeah, a nurse practitioner works too.
Through a doctor, is that what you're saying? So the doctors actually, I mean, nurse practitioners won't send them, but since the doctor oversees them, then it's considered the same thing.
I'm not picky, just whatever I can get.
Do we dare put a piece in there, Michelle, that would say, if you get, if you stop showing symptoms within the 10 days, you have an option to come and take the test, and we'll see where you're at? Is that, is that worth messing with or not?
I think, I think that's it, I do. I was reading up a little bit on my, my tests today, and they're, just how effective, you know, and how accurate they were. And it does have a clause in there about, if they've had symptoms and they're on the downhill slide of their illness, it's probably going to be negative, even if they were positive.
But even though the test will come back negative, so then it would have the appearance that the kid doesn't have it, yet they could still be transmitting it.
Right.
Yeah, they could still, I mean.
So the only surefire way is to make sure they do the 10 days. Or unless the doctor wants to sign a note. Or unless the doctor wants to sign a note and say, I'll hang my hat on.
And most people are going to go get that doctor's note. I'm just going to be honest, because we've been sending kids home now for two years. We've been doing this for two years, isn't it new? We send them home, they've got, they had three or four symptoms on our list. Hey, um, we called a parent, he's got all this going on, you need to come pick him up today. Doctor's note returned. I have not had but one person keep their kids out for 10 days. Because, I mean, most of them run to the doctor quite often anyway.
I'm okay with the doctor note.
Okay. The rest of it, as you've read through, I mean, all this has been struck. You know, is there anything to do with contact tracing, anything to do with quarantine, isolation, CDC recommendation, I took all that out. I did put a couple pieces in there just to strengthen our position from a legal standpoint, and attorneys recommended that all, all districts quote statute. Uh, and let me take you to that one. There's two, two, two of them that are particularly important in this case. And it's at the very first in the introduction, I believe. Yes, as stated in RSMO 170.011, the school board of each school district in the state may make all needful rules and regulations for the organization, grading, and government in the school district. The development and approval of this plan falls under the statutory authority extended to the Willows Springs School Board. So basically, you have the authority to make these decisions, all right? That's what we're falling back on. Um, and, and then there's another one that I put in there. That's over by closer to where we have the contact tracing. Says that stated RSMO 167.191, it is unlawful for any child to attend any of the public schools of this state while afflicted with any contagious or infectious disease, while liable to transmit such disease after being, having been exposed to it. That liability to transmit is a big deal, all right? In this case particularly. Uh, for the purpose of determining the, the disease condition or the liability of transmitting the disease, the teacher or board of directors may require any child to be examined by a physician and exclude the child from school so long as there is any liability to such disease being transmitted by the people. And that law's been on the books for years. So you have to fall back on your statutory authority as school board members to make these decisions. Because that, as I said earlier, it's being placed right in your lap, all right? And so we have to make the decisions that we are, that we believe are in the best interest, listening to our, our, the people that are experts in the field. Okay, uh, the other piece then, and assuming there weren't any issues there, the other big crux of the problem are the household contacts. And we basically crossed everything out, and we kept the title up there. But then the bullet points will be our process for household contacts.
And one thing I got to think about today that we did not put in there for, um, we failed to mention, I think it was in our previous plan, if they have had COVID within the last three months, they would also be excluded from, from being excluded.
So then if they've had COVID for the last three months, then they also would not be, they would be allowed to still come to school?
Yeah, yeah.
And considered vaccinated.
Correct.
Yeah. So I did think about that today.
So we would need to add that piece in there.
Yeah, I would probably do.
So as you go down through the bullet points, vaccinated household members of a positive case remain asymptomatic will not be excluded from school. Unvaccinated household members of a positive case, regardless of whether the positive case is a student or not, will be excluded from school.
But we're unlikely to find out who those people are, because nobody's going to tell us.
Well, yeah, that's true. Officially, we won't. Now, there, we may find word of mouth all the time, you know?
You can't send somebody.
Well, no, no, yeah, you can't, but that would, it would probably warrant a phone call to the parent saying, hey, just, you know, we're trying to make sure all of the kids are safe here. Is there something you're not telling us? You know, that's something that affect.
I will say surprisingly, surprisingly, we usually find out about our positive cases before the health department, and that's students or family members. Uh, they've been really good to call, moms, dads, they're just not sure what to do. Um, and almost at every instance, we, we found out and have been the ones to call the health department first with that. So, so far, I mean, if history repeats itself, we've had good luck with reporting those cases, so.
And that's where, and that's the next bullet. It's highly recommended that household members who are positive, but are not students or staff members, contact the school nurse's office if they have students in their home who are close contacts. And so we're asking our parents to reach out to us if that's going on as a matter of public health. Uh, the duration of exclusion from school for household contacts will be determined by the school nurse on a case-by-case basis. That's as Michelle was sharing, it's such a moving target. I mean, with split families, with, with not even know, knowing the date that they were exposed, it's hard to definitively put an exclusion time on there. So that's why you almost have to do it just on a case-by-case basis.
But not more than 10 days.
No.
But not more than 10 days. If a household member of a positive case, regardless of vaccination status, developed symptoms of COVID-19, they will be excluded from school for 10 days from the onset of symptoms or again until they bring a doctor's note. Um, they are also required to contact the school nurse's office to let the school nurse know when they became, when they become symptomatic.
So if there's, if we have a household and there's siblings in there and mom gets positive or whatever, and the, the symptoms show up and, you know, they're, they're staggered, say, between the kids there, are we going to have a kid that's sitting at the house for more than 10 days?
Yeah, because it went back to that.
Because it went down the chain of these people. I mean, we're going to have a kid sitting at the house for 15, 20, 18 days?
What they did in the past, and that's what we would, what we got that's considered a presumptive positive from the health department. Of course, they're not doing those anymore. But if a mom called and she reports symptoms of child A, um, started on this day, we would count 10 days from that child's symptoms before they could come back. And with each child, it would be 10 days from their symptom onset because they're more than likely a positive that just haven't gotten tested, especially if there's a case already in house. So we wouldn't extend quarantines, we would just go by the first day of each child's symptoms.
Right, but we're talking about quarantining the households, right?
Yeah.
So I, I guess I'm not quite fully understanding.
Okay, so if mom tests positive, right? And you said that pretty soon the kids start experiencing symptoms, and she calls and she reports those to me. Um, of course, they're going to be sent home, but their exclusion, each child's exclusion will not be more than 10 days. It will be when that child's symptoms started, 10 days from then.
But if mom's positive.
Mom's positive, you sent her, you sent that child home the first day mom was positive.
Yeah.
Compared to that, right? So it's more than 10 days. If that child doesn't get it for eight days, then it's already 18 days.
Yes, so, yes, exactly. Sorry, I didn't understand what you're saying. Yes, it'll be 10 days from the symptom onset because that's likely when their illness begins.
So we can still live. So will the, will the siblings be, will their time start over on day eight also? When the, when mom gets positive, eight days later, sibling gets symptoms. Every sibling starts over at that point?
That's what we've done in the past, yes.
Let's see where we're gaining.
If there's six kids, they could be out for two months.
That's very true. It is better than doing 20 days for nobody with symptoms.
It is that.
You know, if they're having symptoms, they likely have it and they don't even be at school. Even if it's eight days.
Need a testing option for that family.
We've gained, but we haven't gained.
Right.
That's the only instance where it's really not, we're not gaining a whole lot. I feel like that, that's rare. It does happen, but it's rare.
Now, would this be a more appropriate place for a test to stay option?
As long as they're not symptomatic.
Correct. If they're not symptomatic.
Yeah.
And they want to take a test, give that option to allow them to stay in school.
Yes, and it would be three, like I said, three negative.
Correct.
Wearing a mask, right?
And wearing a mask.
And wearing a mask, yeah.
And how long is that? It's three, three negative tests in a seven-day period, but then how long is the window for the test? Just seven days or?
Yeah, three, three negative tests within the first seven days because like I mentioned before, um, the vinox now test accuracy does tend to decline after day seven. The mask, uh, if we go right with the previous test to stay guidelines, the masking would go through 14 days at school if they choose to do, to do the, that one.
That's just one of those areas that it's, you know, it's kind of going to be what it's going to be because if you're a household member of somebody that's got it, for your chance, you're probably going to get it too, you know? And that's, it's going to be staggered.
We've had, let's see, we've had 57 positive student cases this year. Of those 57, 24 of those were presumptive positives. So those were, those were household members of positive cases that developed symptoms that never got tested, but the health department was made aware of those symptoms. They went ahead and made them a presumptive positive. There's, I'm sure, others in that 57 that were in households. So it is something to be, I think if you're going to be cautious, that's the area to be cautious in, is those household contacts.
Because they're being exposed.
Yes.
Daily.
57 contacts, that's 57 total this year?
57 positive cases, student cases, and like I said, 20.
You don't have to know how many families that is, do you?
No, I don't have families down. Um, I can tell you, we've had 260 total quarantines this year.
Yeah, no, clearly quarantines aren't working, I get that. I mean, that's, we've known that since last office, truly.
Yeah.
Um, it, it doesn't sound like it's a huge problem right now with family contacts. It's an unfortunate problem, but it doesn't sound like a huge problem.
Yeah, and it's kind of, I just don't, I just don't know what else to do to improve that situation because they are in that, unless they're vaccinated, you know, and they're excluded. And I did check with the Department of Health, I checked with the CDC, I checked with the health departments. That's still recommendation, and it's a recommendation at West Plains School as well, um, vaccinated household members, as long as they develop a symptom.
How does the vaccination help in that situation?
Um, right now, the breakthrough cases for Howe County, so that's at 2.4%. So of all their cases, if they have reported, only 2.4% of those are.
So they're saying you're less likely to get it if you have been vaccinated?
You're less likely, of course, it's not 100%, not like it's 100%. But you are less likely to get it if you're vaccinated.
Okay.
Now, those guidelines may change, of course.
Oh, yeah, there's going to be changes.
But as of right now, that's still what they recommend.
I got a question on the 2.4. They, I mean, that number's on the radio there, and it says to, to date.
Yes.
That's what it is. Okay, so is that 2.4 from the beginning of the pandemic?
I don't know, to be honest with you.
I mean, because if, if you stack it up, you know, we're looking at breakthrough cases and we went a year without any vaccine or anything, and then, then there was, you know, a lot of resistance to it, not a lot of people, and then all of a sudden we say, oh, well, there's only 2.4 cases, you know? That's not really an accurate depiction if that's in fact how it is.
Yeah, I don't know.
Why, damn, why is it statistics?
You're right, I mean, it's, it's, and, and I could be wrong. Maybe they're doing it, uh, you know, since, since the first breakthrough case in Howe County or something, you know, and giving us a really good picture of what's happening. But I, I tend to, um, have concern as to whether that's the case.
I don't know the answer to that for sure, on Howe County's statistics.
I talked to Bill, I know Bill talked to you. You're prepared for, for my concern with, with this situation there. And, um, I, I just have a concern, you know, that doing some research with the FDA and, and what they say about transmission amongst vaccinated people, the transmission of the Delta variant versus the Alpha variant, and how much more that is, and some of that stuff's out there. For me, it's concerning to say this group of people that can transmit, transmit this disease can come back into the school while this other group, we're going to keep them at the house for upwards of 10 days or more, depending on their situation there. So I have concern with that. Can you help me get through that or?
Probably not, but I'll try. Um, so of course, like I said, if you're vaccinated, you're still not a hundred percent protected. We've had vaccinated staff members that have gotten COVID. Um, so that, and I did some, I did some research. Um, household members who are vaccinated with the Delta variant anyway are 25% likely to get COVID. Um, I look at 38% for unvaccinated. Of course, you have to remember, um, anyone that's symptomatic, we're going to be sending them home. Now, you can, you can get that, get COVID from a case two days before they show symptoms. So there is that. Um, it's still less likely, but it's not, the risk is still there. And that's a risk that, yeah, you're going to have. Um, the current recommendation stands. Whether that will change, um, as, uh, second doses, you know, you're getting further and further away from people who've had their second doses, who have an booster. It may change, but as of right now, it has not.
So I, I looked at the same study as you, and so 25% of vaccinated people of a household contact or get COVID-19 when they're in the household, and we're 38% at unvaccinated. Correct. I mean, that, that doesn't seem like a very widespread to say you can come back into the picture and you can't for me. And that's, that's, that's one of the issues why I'm, I'm having issue with this deal. Everything I've researched, I mean, clearly states that, you know, you're going to, you're going to fare much better with a vaccine, you're going to have less health issues, you're going to have, you know, a, a, as far as that goes there. But as far as making this decision where we're going to allow kids to come back into the school district, I, you know, I just can't, that's not a large enough spread for me. And, and, and the, you know, so, and I can go to I'mright.com and come in here and spout off whatever, and you can too, and if you go back and forth, then we'll just disagree forever. But, um, you know, the, the viral load, according to some studies, is, is just as high in vaccinated as unvaccinated, just the period of time is shorter or longer there. I, I, I'm not comfortable with, uh, that part of the, the deal there. I, I think those numbers, if in fact, uh, that's, that's a, a study that we want to trust or, or buy into or believe into, I, it's just not far enough apart for me to be confident that we can bring those people back into the school and, and just be confident by that statute that you read that there's not a, an exposure risk as to what we're doing.
So I, I'm, I want to make sure I understand what you're saying. So you think that we should not allow family members of a positive case back to school, whether they're vaccinated or not?
That is correct, yes. I don't think that there's enough data for me to feel comfortable.
Saying that it's safe to bring them back in?
Bring them back in, they're not going to.
You think we should exclude all, all of those?
And I, I think with the Alpha variant, it shows that it was much more effective in reducing spread. The Delta's a little different animal, and then we've got a whole nother thing coming, you know, that, that, that we're going to be dealing with a different variant that's on the rise there. I mean, I don't see the, I don't see the value in it.
It's a lot more kids there.
It is. It is a lot more kids.
What's our, what's our background here in Howe County? Do you know?
I don't know.
Yeah.
Um, the vaccination rate, um, I looked it up at one time and I thought it was close to nearing 50%.
Yeah, I was thinking it was somewhere.
I can't be, you know, 60.
Fifty, almost 60% nationwide, but I'm not sure.
Yeah, but I think Howe County's way underneath the last I seen. And I would bet that the rate for kids is probably way under that.
Yeah, I would agree, probably.
So we're probably talking about a small, I agree with what you're saying, by the way, but we're probably talking about a very small percentage of kids, vaccinated kids on top of that.
Uh huh. Our vaccination rate for our students is not very high. Um, it's even, I, I haven't gotten a single record for elementary age student yet. Um, so I, I understand what you're saying, I do understand it. Um, I also understand a lot of these families vaccinated their children. Um, there was an incentive to do so. We've been doing it since the beginning of when they started giving out vaccines. If you vaccinated your child, they would not be excluded from school. And I feel like if we, if we do this right now, granted, guidelines may change. If we don't allow them to stay in school now, there's no incentive for anyone to get their child vaccinated.
I don't disagree.
We backed up on what we said earlier, huh? We backed up on what we told them at the beginning of the year.
Yeah, yeah.
But I would, I would think the incentive would be because this is in the best health interest of a child.
It is.
Not because it's more convenient for me.
I think it's twofold.
And to be fair, we're backing up on what they made us do and not what we chose to do.
That's true.
And as far as I, no, no, you're fine. As far as I know, I don't know of anyone who has, who has broken away from, from this yet. Like I said, it may change. That's what everyone's saying.
I wrote that one down. That's a resource I overlook.
I do agree that the spread of those numbers are right. That, that's pretty close together. And I, you know, it was brought up that none of us in here are doctors that can help anybody. Sorry, Marty and, and Tina. You know, if I'm hurting, I'm not gonna run into Marty's house.
He's referring to me.
We're, that, that's an old Dr. Navy story. But, uh, I mean, I, I'm not, I don't know what a primary physician tells somebody on the staff or somebody's students or somebody's kids. I, I don't like the incentivat, the incentivizing them to get that because I, I don't know what their situation is. Their doctor may have told them, you're better off without it. And I don't know.
Almost got it.
Cause it's, you know, there are studies that say 98% of the people get it survive. So, and the doctor may tell them, hey, if you get a blood clot, you're gonna die. So, you know, it, it's a risk, but I'm, I'm, I'm not, but I don't like being, being able to incentivize people to do something.
Now, on the other side of that, it kind of goes to what Michelle had mentioned. Because if, if we pull away from recognizing the vaccination to keep them in school, what about those people, those kids that have already had positive cases? Cause they're supposed to get a three-month window. And so now we're gonna tell them based on that, that if they have a positive case, they really, they got, if they're in a household contact and they had a positive case before, they still have to stay home under this scenario.
Yeah, I would say if we were gonna disregard vaccines, we would have to disregard that.
Correct.
See, do they, is there, do they spread? Can they get it again? Can they spread it within, within that three months?
I haven't had any. I've had some get it right after three-month window.
Is there any information on that?
I'm sure there is. Somewhere there's information on all of this. But as of right now, um, as of right now, and, and the, the research that I read did say it's, it's ongoing as in everything right now is still ongoing. But they feel fairly certain right now that they are safe at that three-month window. But like I said, I've had some hit pretty close. I had a couple of weeks ago, a, a student came down with it right at that three-month window.
So it looks to me like we've got sort of three choices there, right? We can lump vaccinated and unvaccinated together and exclude them all from school. We can lump them together and.
Let them come to school.
Let them all come to school, right? Uh, or we can split, split the difference, right?
Or the other option you could do is you could lump them all together, but then provide the test to stay option if they are asymptomatic.
If we, if we lump them all together and then, and then go down to about bullet point number four, um, and test them.
Well, I mean, we're talking about fair or unfair, including or not including. I think it boils down to health or, or not healthy. I mean, do they transmit it or not? We're trying to stop the trend, the spread of this within the school.
Fair, fair enough. Fair is not our choice. That's, that's not our job is to determine what's fair and fair. Our, our, our job is to, what you're saying, our job is to, to keep them, keep the kids healthy in school, not transmit.
Keep them in school as much as we can and keep this transmission of this as much as we can.
And so if we do wanna keep them healthy, we wanna do, we want them to do everything they can to, to be healthy. So we would wanna provide an incentive to get a vaccine.
Well, I mean, that's a parent's choice. That's not our choice.
No, I didn't, I didn't say that, that we're gonna say you go get the vaccine. We're gonna provide an incentive by keeping them in school if they've been vaccinated.
This is our place to provide incentives.
You could either say you're providing an incentive or you're providing punishment.
It's keeping them safe.
But isn't that saying that we want you to have the vaccine? You know, we're offering you this, and the school board is saying, get your kids vaccinated.
Well, I don't see anything wrong with that, uh, because, you know, statistics are, if you're vaccinated, you're probably not gonna get as sick as you are if you're unvaccinated.
I mean, statistics are that children aren't gonna suffer or have issues with this near as much as, you know.
Right, but, but they can still carry it around.
Right, and that's what we're trying to eliminate.
We don't want them carrying it around in the school.
I mean, I understand the difference between 25% and 38% is, uh.
It's 50%.
Yeah.
The difference is bigger than you think.
Yeah, it is.
It sounds like it's 12 points, but it's 50%. They're twice as likely, right? I mean, that's the statistic.
No, it's a, it's a.
It's the difference between the two.
One out of four or one out of five.
25% is still, you know, enough to be concerned about if they're gonna be able to transmit. So I understand your point.
Right, I just think if that's what we're truly trying to do here, then why are we, you know, if household spreads the issue, then.
Yeah.
So if the board feels that way, I'm not sure if we've worked with everyone yet, so we need to kind of figure out where everyone's at on this. The only other option would be, Dean, kind of what you said, is just lump them all together. And if you're a household member of a positive contact, you're excluded. You're just out unless you wanna pro, provide the test to stay option. Cause it's, it's gonna make it very black and white.
Then the test to stay would be for either's.
Well, if you're asymptomatic.
Right.
You know, if you're not showing any symptoms, then that might be an option to keep coming to school. But that also means you have to adhere to all the rules. That means the three tests, negative test a seven-day period, and you gotta wear a mask.
Wait, 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 who set that rule?
Well, okay.
We didn't set that rule.
That doesn't even work, so.
We're the ones that gotta set the rules.
So we can make the test to stay whatever we want it to be.
Sure, why can't we test them?
Uh, after I hear from our resident expert over here.
Cause I've been having problems with 10 days from the very first minute.
Yeah, the, the test to stay was devised as a serial testing, um, program. Because as I said before, on, if you, if you're up in, in days on, since your symptoms started, the accuracy of the my next now test gets down. So in order to make sure that we weren't sending a positive student back to class early, they recommend doing three serial tests in the first seven days because after that day seven, it's probably not gonna be an accurate test. Um, I will.
So do we, are they at home during those seven days?
No, they would be at school.
They're in school. So we're, we're, we're giving them a test for a week and it's gonna be less and less effective. And they're gonna be in school from the very beginning. That, that doesn't make sense though, does it?
Well, as long as, as long as we start doing it when they first have symptoms.
So the first test matters, but each test after that is less and less effective?
After day seven, they get less effective. That's why they totally have to do them after day seven.
Okay, so the tests are good through the first week. So we only test them for the first seven days that they come back asymptomatic.
Yes.
Would that be a small number of students without the contact tracing factor that it would, would have been before?
I think so. Well, I will say, I mean, we've had.
Less than 57.
We've had a lot. I'm lowering down the number.
Well, that's positives, that's not symptoms.
I will tell you, okay, so total this year.
Presumptive positives, so yeah, symptoms.
Total this year, we've had 260 total quarantines. 156 of those were from school. The rest were from households.
But, but not, not positives. We're not, we're not dealing with quarantines at this point.
These aren't.
We, we only need to look at the ones that actually had symptoms and, and were positive or presumed positive.
So we would be looking at all household contacts because if they're quarantined because they're a household contact, then they're gonna have to be in the test to stay in order to come back.
So assuming that you had. Well, I mean, without knowing how many families you got in that 57, it doesn't, you have 57 families there, right? You're right. They could all have six siblings, 300 kids.
So 104 that we would have had as household contacts.
How many?
104.
Household can, household contacts?
Is that a manageable number?
To be honest, if it's, if it's a steady, you know, bit, um, where you're getting a few now and then, yes.
104 were three months is what you did?
If we get, yeah, we get several large families that get a little hairy, but you know, it's doable.
Cause she said 15 minutes per kid, three times.
Yeah, three times a week. That's a big job.
So I mean.
But it keeps kids in school?
It's just gonna depend. Sometimes we're busy with COVID and sometimes we're not. So hopefully, I mean, right now, we're not too bad. Hopefully it stays that way. We only have nine students out right now. So I'm hoping that.
We're gonna look at this every 30 days? Wump them all together and test them.
Yeah, I, I just want, are you, with this plan, is, is this where you stand right now, the way, this is what you believe is the best way to go?
That's what we devised in our lawless committees.
Is that, and I, just listening to you, I, to me, you know more than any of us. So, uh, I defer to, to show what the, what they've come up with. That's my take on it.
I know they and Bill have put a whole lot of time into, uh, all of the legalities and the ins and outs of all of this. I appreciate the, the time you've put into it. And you've dealt with the families, you've dealt with the situations of quarantines, you've dealt with the health department. You've seen it from every angle that you can possibly see it from. And so that's why I also would support what our health staff promotes.
Thank you for your insight the other day, so I appreciate it.
You know, one of the things I would suggest, well, cause you're right, I mean, this is gonna be a monthly conversation, which it's by design because if, if we start seeing cases go up, we may have to readjust it, right? It was 60%. I would, based on what, what Brent had to say, I would recommend that we stay with what we have here. We'll reevaluate it again in January. Uh, these will not go into effect until January 5th. If you, if y'all looked at the motion, uh, and if something happens that the court ruling has stayed and it's not official, because the, the, the motion is worded that it's contingent on that. And so if it, if it stayed, then we're still staying with the existing plan that we have right now until such time that we get more clear guidance from someone.
So if the court case has stayed, then we will continue to contact trace and.
Right, we'll keep doing what we're doing right now. Yeah, that's right.
Wow, they'll have.
Because that, that case did, I mean, we're still following, if that, if that stayed, then automatically the health, the health department gets all their authority back.
There, that's not gonna happen. I don't think that's gonna happen.
I don't think that's gonna happen.
I think this is the world that we're in right now. I mean, we're, we're gonna be the ones making that decision. While we may not be, we may not be health officials. But neither are we educators, I would remind you. So, uh, regardless, we are elected officials and we have to make that decision. So, uh, you know, we take in the expertise and listen to what everybody tells us and then we make a decision because that's our job. And I don't.
Well, I said, that, that's not my favorite part of it, but I do agree with what Coach Charlie said as far as, you know, the lawless committee met and, and, uh, if that's what they think the best plan for the school for right now, then I'm okay with it for right now. I mean, it looks like we'll be looking at it next month too. So I think that's the first time I've ever agreed with Coach Charlie.
In, in, uh, true fairness, we've only got about nine school days until we're gonna revisit this.
Yeah, that's true. So it may not be much of a review of the January.
Someone could have saved that.
We're probably up with data, but, you know.
And I, so are we good with going forward with the, with, with the plan as presented? And next month, we wanna see what the, we wanna talk about the option of possibly, if, if the court case.
Yeah, let's see.
If we're looking at a test to stay for vaccinated and unvaccinated household contacts, is that what we wanna look at next month?
I, I'd be interested in, in having Michelle look at that. Not to throw more stuff on your plate, but it's all.
I, I, I would like to see us have at least a plan for a test to stay.
I've got tests to stay ready to go. I mean, I had it ready because I thought that's where we were gonna go. It's just gonna be if we wanna follow the, the plan that we had from the Department of Health or if we wanna veer from that and do something different. If we wanna do what they recommended or if we wanna do something completely different. But then again, we're getting off course on what, you know, and, and I understand, I understand. I disagree with the CDC. I disagree with the Department of Health on many things. But when we're talking about tests to stay, we just need to decide if we wanna follow what the Department of Health says we should do or if we wanna try something different. So that's the only thing that we need to figure out.
I'd like to look at next month.
You'll come back with a couple of recommendations on test to stay options for us in January?
Yeah.
Thank you.
I think we would need input from the board though, because as you said yourself, Dean, the test to stay as laid out by the State Department of Health may not be the test to stay that this board wants.
Well, I mean, the Department of Health has put out a lot of stuff that didn't make a lot of sense. I mean, quarantine is an excellent example. They gave us all these quarantine rules and none of them, and we've known for over a year were effective. We've been sending home kids that had no business being at home. So I, I, I'm not saying that their test to stay program is wrong, but I'm saying I'd like to look at that and see if it makes sense.
So for the time being, we, what we have before the board is here. So if the board were to approve this, with the idea in mind that we're putting it back in January anyway and we might be able to provide some type of te, test to stay option and just have that conversation.
If, if it even looks like it's needed.
Right, right.
I mean, if we're starting to exclude a lot of people.
As Tony said, nine days, nine days didn't probably give a lot of operation.
And, 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 and we're not changing this, we're not changing this plan until January 3rd. We're sticking with the same plan.
We'll change it effective December 22nd.
Well, but the school's out.
Correct.
So, I mean, this, this week, we're staying with the plan that we've had for the last.
Correct.
Right.
That is right.
Seems like forever now.
Yeah, I'd almost have.
Yeah, chances of actually accomplishing anything in January are pretty slim.
Yeah.
Okay.
So that might be a little.
But what might happen is, uh, there might be an explosive, explosion of cases between now and then that have nothing to do with school but have everything to do with our community that might impact our decision in January the 3rd, right? So just because we're not at school doesn't mean COVID takes two weeks off, right? So we could conceivably have a completely different view, uh, by January 3rd or January 5th.
3rd, I think.
Well, our meeting won't be 25th or 11th.
You know, with everybody getting together over Christmas and ballgames and stuff like that, you know, a week or two weeks after we come back might be whenever, if we, if things get serious. Who knows?
So the rest of this, I mean, I think it's moving target, we'll just have to kind of figure out how to go. But I think it's pretty much, there's unanimity among the board, the contact tracing needs to go away.
Yes.
Y'all, y'all good with that. Turn the fountains on, let's get back to eating regular.
There you go.
All right. So other than that, we just need to iron out the rest of it. That's the most complicated part of this whole thing for you, Michelle, is trying to.
Yeah, and I'll look more into tests to stay. I know that the program that Missouri adopted is the same program that several, several other states are using. It's not just Missouri. Um, I'll look and see if there's any other variations that I can find of it and we can just kind of go from there whenever we need in January. I do have a question. Um, I wanted to, since you guys have approved the contact trace, no contact tracing in school. I had to quarantine four kids today in a high school because they were close contact of a positive case at school. Is, do you want me to leave them out?
There's nothing we can do until the 22nd.
Okay.
Right, and that's my understanding. I, I, I hate it.
No, we can't. There's other school districts that have quit it already. West Plains has. The, the kids that were, the ki, the kids that were, were quarantined, came back to school Friday in West Plains before their, before their time was up. We can do, you know.
Well, if that's the case, the, the motion will need to be changed.
Yeah.
And all, all you'll do on the motion is just to prove this as presented, effective immediately.
It's finals week and this and that.
Nah, I can get myself there.
To bring them back now?
Bring them back.
So then would it still be contingent upon the December 22nd date then?
There you go, getting all technical.
No, we'd be doing it today, effective immediately.
So irrespective of that, we're doing this. So if they stay the decision and all those other guidelines go back into place with contact tracing, we've already moved away from that when our ship sailed.
Well, we may have to revisit that.
We may have to come back in January and say, oops.
Yeah, just kidding.
Oops, yeah, just kidding, just put it back in.
But we, but we said early on, we do not think that's gonna happen.
I don't think that's gonna happen at all.
And we also didn't think that we would get the other three money too. I haven't heard anything on that yet either, so. That's a whole other conversation.
So for school contacts, I was concerned because there were several parents upset because it is finals week. It's important.
Right, it is.
Um, household, or, yeah, school contacts, I'll call them in the morning. What about household contacts? What do you mean do with those? All of this?
It's laid, it's laid out right here. This is what we're, this is what we're approving tonight. Is that correct? You wanna wait until, you wanna wait?
Unless, unless we're gonna just rewrite the whole thing.
You want this to be effective immediately, that's the question.
Yes.
As of tonight, this is what we're doing.
Starting tomorrow morning, 8:00.
And we'll need to change the motion accordingly when we get to that point.
And we'll need to add the three months.
And the, the, and what would that look like? How would, how would we word that?
Um, I had written it down. Uh, okay.
Well, would, would be vaccinated household members of a positive case who remain asymptomatic or individuals who have had prior positive.
Who have had COVID, who have been COVID positive within the last three months.
The last three months would also be allowed to attend school.
Are you gonna, does that require approval?
I can, I can verify that.
Well, I think she, she.
They can't just say I had it.
She has like the database, don't you, or whatever?
I, I can't look up results. I usually call the health department.
And they'll verify that.
If I don't have a doctor's note, sometimes I'll have a doctor's note to say if I'm asymptomatic.
So, so you'll help me draft that wording to go in there as well?
You may want to fill out, I think he stepped out through that description.
We decided to cancel school.
We're gonna start this immediate, we're gonna start this, we're gonna start this immediately so that it doesn't impact kids this week. Cause there's some that have already been, been quarantined, isolated. And on the top there, we're going to include not just vaccinated household members of a positive case who remain asymptomatic, but anyone who's tested positive in the last three months will also fall in that category. Right, Michelle's?
They're considered vaccinated if they've had the last three.
And then the wording on the motion then would be, we could just make it as simple as a motion to approve all the changes to the, the safe return to instruction plan as presented, effective immediately. You know, I don't even think that put effective immediately, just as presented. And then that'll imply that it starts tomorrow. Yeah?
Yeah.
I think that's kind of what the board was saying.
What's that mean?
Okay. All right.
Done?
I think so.
Okay.
That's a good time.
Uh, there we go. Board self-evaluation.
And I put a copy of that in front of each of you, so.
Has everybody had a chance to look over this before tonight? Okay. Initial thoughts are about the same as it always is. Before next year, if I'm still here, I plan to get us a different evaluation going. Something that's not so wordy and the way it's written up. I'll need some help with that. But anyhow, let's move forward with this one. From looking at the comments, kind of what I, the thing I seen mentioned the most or that I pulled out of this was that possibly we look at a lot of different statistics and hear a lot of different what's going on in our district. And I think this was alluded to earlier when we were talking to administrators. But we, maybe we're listening to that, but not asking enough questions or seeing follow-up. We're not doing our due diligence to, to get follow-up about what we're doing with some of those scores. And we see, I, when we see low math scores and we look at the, the information that the administrators, some of them, bring to us, what are we doing with that then? And I don't think we're, we're looking at the data and saying, okay, you know, yeah, we're not, we're missing some kids here. Our math scores aren't where we want them to be. Our reading scores aren't where we want them to be. And I think we'd all agree that both of those scores aren't where we want them to be. And then I don't know that we're following up as a board, asking those questions, okay, they're not where we want them to be. What are we gonna do about it? Is that, did anybody else get that feeling from reading this evaluation?
We gotta quit just looking at the data and start doing something with it.
Well, I think one of the things that stuck out to me is how much vision is mentioned in each question. I mean, nearly every question talks about vision. I don't know that I can tell you what the board's vision is or what your guys' vision is. I don't know what that is. And so I, I think that, you know, trying to figure out what we're doing, or, you know, I think that you're, what is the vision? What, what is our plan? What are, what are we doing moving forward? Where are we falling short? You know, where can we help? I think more open figuring that out is, is what I see from this. Trying to open that up and see if we're all on the same page is.
Kind of have more open discussion in the boardroom versus this.
Well, I mean, I think Dean's in the best work. None of us are educators, so it's, it's challenging for us to understand the data and understand the process.
Two of us are.
They're retired.
It's hard for me to sort through that educational jargon.
But as we're sitting here talking, maybe ask them more while we're deciding some of this stuff.
Anybody else got any thoughts on, on this?
We didn't set specific goals. We look at this data, but we don't have a target. So when we come back at it, we just look at the data again. And it's just, it's, it's like Groundhog Day. You know what I mean? I mean, we're just, and then, and then we look at it again. And we don't say, we're gonna have a 2% increase and here's how we're gonna get there. And that's, I think that's missing.
If you're aiming at nothing, that's what you're gonna hit.
Huh?
If you're aiming at nothing, that's what you're gonna hit.
Right. I mean, I, I think that's, I think that's where the board is missing it.
And, and possibly the administrators have those goals and they're doing stuff, stuff about it. I, I would hope they are, but, but we're not asking, I don't think we're asking the right questions to know what's going on with it.
I, I agree. I mean, this is a board evaluation. I'm not faulting the administrators at all.
Yeah, no, no.
I'm saying this is what we're not doing.
Yeah.
I mean, I've been watching it for six years and I'm not happy with, with my performance on that issue.
What else?
Well, I'm with what Matt alluded to here about, you know, a vision. You know, how many of us know what the school mission statement is? I mean, you probably do, but.
Is it written somewhere?
On the front of your back. It's on the front of your back, isn't it?
I don't recall us spending much time, you know, talking about. And then, you know, you can, you can spend a lot of time and not get anywhere with some of that stuff. But, but I do think it's important that we all kind of have a shared vision. And, and then goals based on that vision, accomplishing that, that mission that we set. You know, it's, I think our mission is to improve the quality of life for everyone, right? And so that encompasses a lot more than test scores. And so how do we incorporate everything else? And it also, along with data from test scores.
Academics, certainly a piece of it, but not the only piece.
No, but it's a vital piece, but.
You know, I would, I would suggest that we probably need to have more than just our regularly monthly meeting for that. That needs to be a retreat.
Right.
I hate those.
Oh, yeah.
That's what it needs to be. A board planning session.
And those typically happen during the day.
And they typically happen during the day. That's right. And, and so they should. And we should be, we should be as a board committed to that degree. My personal opinion.
You know, there's a, the boards have, you really have a perfect opportunity in front of you right now. I don't know if y'all know that or not. But with the new superintendent coming in, you can hit the ground running pretty quick. And I know MSBA will provide superintendent and board relation, but I think that's critical to whomever you hire to get y'all on the same page, doing the same thing. They can also provide support for strategic planning. And they're actually pretty good at, pretty good with it. And then you just, y'all kind of work together to develop a shared vision. I think in fairness, the last year and a half with COVID just derailed everything.
Yeah.
Just derailed everything.
That's all been on since I've been, board member has been.
Yeah. You know, I think we need to get back to, remember we developed a, a scorecard?
Yeah.
And haven't been doing a whole lot of anything, but it is, now we probably need to get back to that again and just see what's going on. And then, because that had metrics on it. To, and when you start, when you talk about setting goals, those were defined goals there that we could just work on, you know? So I think that with the transition that's happening, I think you have a really good opportunity to start going that direction again and dusting that thing off and start moving forward again. But I think that the new soup's got, it's gonna be critical in that process to kind of get everybody on the same page, so.
Well, just what you said about the scorecard, because I remember that and that, and that, I thought that was going to be a very useful tool. So I think that is a, a good thing to revisit.
But then, then we lost all of our data because the kids weren't in school and the tests, the sensors weren't being given.
All, all the records all the time.
We had no measurables.
Exactly.
But yeah, we can go back and dust that off and, and I can work with the new soup in terms of what that looks like and he or she can maybe move forward with that. But it's, it's just gonna be really important that once that person's on board, that, that the board collectively works side by side with the superintendent to kind of develop that vision. I think it's gonna be really important. And, and it's just a lot more helpful if you bring an outside person in. I just, it's, it's, I've, I've facilitated that, but it's not, as a superintendent, you shouldn't be facilitating your relationship with the board. I think you need to have somebody come in and have those open conversations that you need to have, especially when you start to talk expectations, I think of that nature, but.
And, and we're paying for it already.
Correct.
Most, most of it, and some of it, they'll do a lot more than, than very minimal cost.
They've got other stuff.
And, and, and we should certainly invest in our, in our governance.
But that board superintendent training is the heart of the cost of the superintendent service.
Yeah, the superintendent's, there's other parts, too.
Strategic planning, for instance.
Right, that are well worth it.
Correct.
And that's probably something that we need to look forward or look, look at moving forward.
Absolutely. Yeah, and I, there are some boards that they'll, they'll have regular work sessions. I mean, they'll have, and I know nobody wants to get to having two board meetings a month, you know, I'm getting down that road. But if, one is for operations and the other one's for, it's truly a work session. You know, and, and it doesn't need to have to be every month, maybe every other month or something like that. But, but to focus on other stuff that you don't ordinarily get to focus on, you know? So you don't spend an hour and a half talking about COVID, you know? To really make important those things that need to be important.
Yep.
And the only way you're gonna do that is you set away the time to do it.
I, I think you're absolutely right.
So are we going to take our own advice and set some goals, some hard lines here? I mean, are we gonna plan a date or are we gonna outline specifically the steps we're gonna take here or?
I don't think tonight is the time for that. I think that's gonna, you know, we probably need to plan for that. And I think we probably need to get the superintendent search behind us before we do that.
So we're gonna take on this after we have hired the superintendent, is that what we're, is that the goal then?
Well, we've already got two meetings scheduled for January and we're likely to have three.
Yeah.
So January's gonna be pretty booked up. We're trying to get another meeting where we can set some of this stuff up. I don't know if we'll be done with soup search by February or not. I hope.
Yeah, the goal is to have, have the soup hired by the first of February.
So at that point.
The end of January is gonna be very busy because we're gonna have the 17th, we're gonna figure out who we're gonna interview. Then we're gonna get interviews set up. We will have a, you know, a day or two days, two evenings, whatever it takes to get the interviews completed. Then we will meet again when, just a day or two after that, as a board, to discuss what we're, and hopefully make a selection. So January is gonna be.
It's been a long time because of the board already.
So this is gonna be early in the year, February goal to try to dive into this and start?
Probably February, February more.
Yeah, keep in mind, you've got a superintendent who's not under contract yet, right?
Okay, you can't work with him, but we can start talking about.
You can do your own, you can do your own, but I would, I would strongly encourage you that once that new superintendent is hired, I mean, I'm talking July, August, you'd be sitting down having that conversation right away. You know, I mean, I'd, I'd be scheduling somebody to come out and have that, that board superintendent relationship piece done first. And, and, because if you don't do it, then you don't do it, you know? And then you're six months down the road and you probably should have done it when they first got on board. So I would start that immediately and I'd do some strategic planning in line with that as well. But I still think you can do a whole lot of it without the new person here. You know, because they need to have input.
So the goal now is to address this.
Well, I'm saying, don't, I'm not kicking it.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're not kicking it down, we're not, well, we're not kicking.
They will evaluate ourselves.
We're not kicking the, kicking the tin can down the road. You are, but you're also in a very critical piece here. You hired a new superintendent.
Yeah.
All right, this isn't like, this isn't small potatoes here, right? So that is paramount. That's the most important decision you have in front of you right now. That will impact this district, could impact this district for a long time. You know, so that, I think you need to make first things first. That needs to be a priority, get the superintendent on board and then going through that process. And talking about COVID every, every month, probably.
No, every month.
Every month, every month.
Thirty days.
Every month, so.
Matt, would you hand me a water, please?
Here, you can have mine.
Thanks, sir.
Is everybody good with that? Understand what we're doing moving forward? S R three funds?
Uh, yes, I have in your packet, kind of where we are with the budget allocation for S R three. Keep in mind, it has not been appropriated yet. And I'm already sure with the group that the feds have already came out and they've given all the states notice that the feds do not, that have that appropriated to their local entities by the 24th of March, that they'll just come in and sweep those funds and take them back and redistribute it to the states who do want it. So there is a, there is a, a point of emphasis here for our legislators to hopefully do the right thing. I think they will. I mean, I believe they will. But being that, as I said, the budget itself, which is on the application that I submitted in August, their total allocation is 3,382,600, 20% on learning loss, which is 676,520. That's just right at 20. That doesn't mean you can't spend more than 20% on learning loss. But that's just at the 20%. The middle school HVAC project, which was already approved by the board, 1,715,410. Staffing needs and supplies, there's some money built into that for additional custodians, for additional school nurses, for the additional school nurse that we have, counseling support, behavioral support, cleaning supplies. Just a hodgepodge of items in there. It's 190,000. So that total amount there is 2,581,930, which leaves a difference of 800,670, which is as of yet uncommitted. And so then the conversation that I thought we would have and then is where do we go from here? I will say that, as I shared in the, in your packet, I did write in additional classroom space into the application because we did have a work session at that time. We talked about that specifically. Because of the, the social distancing efforts in the weight room, then the district would engage a licensed professional engineer and commissioning agents, as well as an architect, how to define the scope of the project. And then again, the specific need being addressed to reduce the risk of virus transmission and so forth. So that's kind of where we are. You have until October 31st of 2024 to spend these funds, so you don't have to come up with an answer like right now. But I guess I, I need to find some direction from the board on what your plans are with the S R three funds that are as of yet not appropriated to us. But so I'm, I'm not sure I want to go too far in that. As you already said, on this HVAC, we've already made the commitment on that one, all right? And, but we already talked about the fact that if something happened to the S R three that they didn't come, that just became a 10-year lease purchase, all right? Just so everyone knows that, because it's gonna be in line to win the last payment that goes off in, in '23 on the middle school addition project. So everyone knows that. You kind of went into that with eyes wide open. But I don't know how much more you would continue to expend the dollars without really getting that final answer that the money's coming. So, but I just, just a general conversation on where we all want to head from here.
I, I, I'm disappointed if we are only gonna spend 20% of this money on learning loss. I just don't think that our, our academic performance warrants spending that little money on academic recovery. We've got all these kids that have lost all this time and we're gonna spend the minimum amount of money that the government allows us to, to, to provide for the recovery of their education?
Tom says it ain't a priority, don't it?
Kind of, kind of says it ain't a priority. I mean, I, I don't, if we've got two calendar years to spend this money, right? So, I mean, there's $800,000 there. It looks to me like $400,000 a year to get something going, get some of our kids recovered their education, get some after-school programs, get some additional programs like Dr. Spencer was telling us about. I mean, whatever tags, I mean, let's get the administrators, we're not the educators, let's get the administrators to tell us what they need.
Now, I know on the 676,000, 216,000 is already budgeted for after-school tutoring. And so that part's already there for, for the two years.
Okay.
And I've already kind of taken a leap of, a blind leap of faith, because I already told the administrators, plan on starting that in January. Because we just can't, irrespective of S R three, we gotta do something to start recovering the loss. Even they, even, even if they don't reimburse us, it doesn't matter. So that's gotta start sooner rather than later. But that's part of the plan that we have. New reading curriculum was part of that plan. What were some of the other items? Can you, what's that?
Science.
Or science, I'm sorry, science was part of that.
Consultants that I was talking about, those are written in there. And we're piloting some new online programs to, that are similar to iReady for other subject areas that assess where a kid is and take them forward from there, so.
So, so here's my, here's my question to you. If you had $800,000, there's nothing more you can do than what you're doing with 676,000?
I'm not saying that, but Mr. Hall, whenever we talked about the fact we were getting S R three money, he asked all of us, he said, so what are some things that you would like to do? And I gave my wish list and every one of it was put on there, approved, so.
What about the other buildings?
Same.
Okay.
Sometimes you just can't throw money.
That was my next question.
You know, we're working hard and throwing, we've, we've got some good things that we're gonna put into place. But, but honestly, I'm not sure what else I could spend money on besides people and that, that teacher component, but with, when you hire a teacher.
Yeah.
That's money's gonna run out.
Well, they need to.
That would be the one thing I could spend more money on, but that's the one thing I can't, I can't count on.
You only got a two-year window, for sure.
Right, so.
Yeah, you got all your teachers, you guys just tell them it's a two-year commitment.
Right.
How much is this 676,000?
We can't find teachers anyway.
No, it's all committed. We haven't spent any of it yet.
It's all, we've all, we've got plans.
Well, we've already ordered some stuff on it because I, I didn't want to wait. I mean, I think the stuff on learning loss, we gotta do irrespective of that, all right? But we haven't, I can't ask for reimbursement on that until they've appropriated the money, all right? Now, the tutor, we haven't spent anything on yet, because that's gonna start in January. But I mean, what are some things you've already, yeah, we have some socio-emotional learning stuff that you've done already?
Yes, we, Mr. Coggin and I have, that I have noticed, that was part of the SEL piece. We've already put two pieces of software into use this year that we've gone ahead and paid for that are written into that. And my book said my consultant is written into that. My science books haven't been purchased yet, but they've, they've reviewed a bunch of textbooks and, and made pros and cons lists and they have their science series picked out, but that hasn't been purchased yet because that's a pretty good expense, so.
The suicide prevention speakers that we had, that we had come out in August and then all the stipends to pay the teachers came out of learning loss as well.
I guess what I'm asking, that's 676, we've got plans right now in place to spend every penny of that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, we do.
And, and no plan went unfilled. There's no reason to, to set any portion of this money aside for education. I mean, academic. And, and no plan went unfilled. There's no reason to, to set any portion of this money aside for education, I mean, academic education.
I wouldn't right now. We, I'm interested to see how our learning loss room, um, kind of goes this spring.
I mean, this is a two-year commitment.
Well, I would say for learning loss too, and that's, that's more specific than if you give me money for academics, I can spend some money for academics, but this, like, I can get Chromebooks and we can go one-to-one and we can do all sorts of things.
Does that can improve our scores?
No, it won't. And that's why I'm saying, I think we're doing all we can do for learning loss, but that's, that's a very, that's a subcategory of academics.
Well, I don't mean learning loss that because the kids were out of school. I mean, our kids are graduating from high school, reading forty-nine percent of them at grade level. I mean, what can we do to make that fifty-four percent or sixty-five percent? I mean, is, is there nothing more we can do?
I think we're doing everything we can with, with that money. We will, you know, we'll add to what we're already doing.
Once, once we have the six hundred seventy-six thousand, that's everything we can do.
Like Mr. Hall said, we've already, I mean, we've got a math program that we're getting, the tutoring, um, we've got a, a social emotional piece that we're gonna add in January that we're really excited about that I'll, I'll tell you next month, but anyway.
And like Marty said, um, staffing, you know, I, I would, I would love to have three more reading specialists and put one in at every grade level, because if they're, if we don't get them where they need to be reading by the end of eighth grade, um, you know, research shows it caps off there and they're not likely to, so. But where do I put them? And then how do I fit that into my schedule? And, you know, there's, you know.
So many hours in a day.
You can't just, you can't just buy some people and stick them in there and, and, because I don't, I don't have the room for them in the day and in the building even, you know? Because Mr. Hall offered that. He said, what about some more RTI people? And where am I gonna put them? I have no more room in my building and, um, and no more hours in my schedule, so.
You're in the same.
If, if we're looking at this testing, the state in school, do we need maybe, if it gets overwhelming, do we need to set somebody back for possibility of, you know, nurse for a year or so, or part-time?
I've got, uh, there's part of that, a hundred ninety thousand set aside for nursing staff. So, if we need to add one, we can add one, but that also is gonna go offset the, because we have three nurses at.
I know, but if, if it gets overwhelming, just like.
We could use that for that. We could use that for that. See, and all these things, if this is the original application, uh, once they're appropriated, then there's gonna be a, a process in place to go in and amend the budget application if you wanna change and go a different direction. Cause you still have, you know, what, almost three years to spend the money. So things change.
I never dreamt that I had three administrators in the room and we just offered them some more money and they kind of shot us down.
I think it'd be wise to sit on it for a little bit and see, part of the half of it or.
I mean, it's hard to spend maybe.
We don't have, we don't have to spend yet anyway, but.
Well, I know, but just, you know, what's next?
But I understand how, I don't know, I could, I think it's time to be making a plan for it though. We don't wanna wait till last minute and say, okay, now we got another eight hundred thousand dollars, what are we gonna do? I, I, I don't think, I don't think it's too early to be trying to, trying to have a plan, which direction we're going with.
Not like having a savings account, I don't know.
Well, but we're not gonna be able to save it.
Well, I realize that, but, you know, but six months from now.
Well, this.
We'll be doing the same thing in six months and besides trying to talk about what we're gonna do with it.
And we mentioned two things in there, HVAC and a weight training facility. So I think that needs to be discussed. Are we, are we talking about possibly building a weight room? Uh, I don't think yet, Big Genius said what we're using right now compared to everybody else we've got, it's not even close to being up to snuff. Uh, I think our kids deserve a better, wider, open space, the way this, way this was written, uh, because of COVID and spreading kids out. Uh, that facility can be used for, it's not just for athletics, it's not just for football, it's for your, uh, all your kids in school that are in those classes. Uh, I think it's a good, uh, facility to be used for their, uh, health. Uh, that's what we wanna teach kids to get active and be doing things. Uh, and I think the facility we have now is just, I mean, if you've been up there and tried to be in that, up there while they're trying to lift weights, while there's fifty or sixty junior high kids down there on that gym floor. It's almost impossible, uh, to hear anything, to move about with, uh, the equipment in there. And I think that, uh, I think it's time that we talked about that. I think it's been a long time coming. And if nothing else, I think at least like Tony said, if, if we're headed that direction, we at least need to be start the ball rolling, whether it's, I'm not saying you have to spend the money, but you need to be start making plans and talking about what you're gonna do and so on and so forth. And not wait till the last second and all of a sudden this is what we're gonna do.
Well, I feel better about that, moving, talking about that after, you know, a, a weight facility or a training, a, uh, athletic facility, or whatever you wanna call it. Um, knowing that we've talked about that we're in pretty good shape with our learning loss. We've spent, cause we've spent money there, haven't actually spent it, but we've got, we know where it's gonna go. We've got the extra hundred ninety thousand for additional staffing. To know, I feel more comfortable that we're covered, that we've got that part of it covered. I, I would, knowing where our kids stand as far as their academics, knowing that we're struggling in some areas and we're doing some stuff there, I, I do feel better about, uh, talking about some sort of a facility at this point.
I'm a proponent of things I can hold on to and I, I mean, I think you're right in the fact that these guys have commented and said that they, I mean, you use the term wishlist, I mean, that's a, that's a pretty, you know, as far as what they need there, I mean. We got an opportunity with some money. I like a, I like a structure. I like something that's, that's solid, that's there, if that's a weight room or if that's the biggest need that we have, you know, I think that's, that's worth talking about, that's worth weighing out, you know, what we need. But, um, I think those, you know, of course, it was an insurance claim. Anytime we get a new structure, a new building, I mean, that's an investment years into the future.
It's a tangible thing.
Yeah, that's not something that, you know, and I, and I don't disagree with you Dean, I have the same concerns, you know, as far as, as education test scores go, and I'm, I'm hoping to understand all of that better. Um, you know, I, 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 I think that's something that we can do, work on as a board and as a administrative group to understand those numbers and figure that out and then figure out what that vision is that, that are, but as far as I'm concerned. I mean, I, I have no issues investing money into a structure of some sort, something that we can hold on to and that it's a generational thing that's gonna be here for a while.
Well, I'll tell you, I don't have any problems getting rid of the, I, I mean, I don't have any problems getting rid of the weight room we got. It's a, it's a, it's a fail, capital F, no question about it. I mean, I completely agree. What I don't wanna do is take the geography that we have and just plunk down a thirty-by-sixty building in the middle of it. And what we really need is something other than that, right? Because geography is not gonna be our friend. Um, I, I would rather, and I don't even know that it's still possible, we, we had discussed at one point a FEMA building that was twenty-five seventy-five, right? But we couldn't do it because it was gonna be a four or five million dollar building, which means our portion was gonna be, uh, one point three, right? Well, if here's eight hundred thousand and if this S R money comes through and we've got a guy that says, well, we'll loan you some money on top of your, when your, when your loan expires. Why don't we just loan ourselves five hundred thousand dollars there? Add it to the three hundred thousand dollars and build it and, and build something like FEMA shelter that gives us that, but gives us more and, and does a better job of husbanding our geography.
That's a good idea.
Okay, I don't disagree with that, but I mean.
But that's contingent on it being approved, right? That's an if, right?
There's several steps there. I mean, it's, we've gotta get the S R money approved, we have to get approved for, or apply, approved, whatever, for a FEMA shelter. I mean, that's, that could be a, quite a process that could be down the road.
Uh, but if, if we find out, if, if the money gets appropriated in March, right, then we know that's coming in, then you're covered on the one point seven. So you know we can get all that back, right? So then what you're talking about kind of makes sense because it's like, well, maybe we can leverage what's left and then borrow what we can to come up with something that'll permit. Now, the downside on that is that it's not gonna happen overnight, all right? I mean, just the, if you're talking about building a FEMA building, that could also accommodate maybe a, a weight room. You know, the process for getting FEMA approval is very laborious. The last time we waited, you know, the application was like a year, just for them to tell us no, you didn't get it, right? So it's, it's, it's not gonna happen. If you're thinking we need a weight room sooner rather than later, that's probably not gonna be the process, but what's the priority, you know?
I mean, can we, can we go down a dual path and, and if we find out that we're not gonna be able to manage the, the, the bigger, the bigger buy, so.
Set the weight room up.
Still go the other way.
Pick and tie into a FEMA shelter.
I'm just saying, I just want us to do something thoughtful. I mean, we have an immediate need, no question about it, nobody can argue that. But we still have to manage this thing in a long-term way and we need to leverage our dollars the best we can. We're not gonna get dollars like that very often. I just want us to see us, you know, I just know that you watch people in their yard and they go, oh, I need a garden shed and they put it right there in the middle of where they wanted to be able to extend their house out. I mean, we just, we do short-sighted things sometimes as people and I just want us to be thoughtful about that piece of it, because geography is not our friend.
I don't think part of my city's a big enough.
Probably not.
But on the other hand, because, and I think I've had this conversation with multiple of you and about the conversation about FEMA building. And, cause yeah, they did call me and they said, you know, would you like to be considered again in the application process? And I'm like, ninety-ten? They go, no, seventy-five-twenty-five. I'm like, well, try to come up with about one point three million dollars right now, when we may be sitting on a one point seven million dollar loan staring at us, probably not right now, you know? We need to kind of wait and see what, how this thing shakes out. I would be much more comfortable, once I know the S R three dollars are coming, to approach them and say, okay, now what does it take to get our hat and ring again?
But we may know that by January.
Yeah, if they.
We'll know one way or another by, by March.
Yeah, but I think, yeah, exactly, or, or not, you know?
Or not.
But I think as soon as we get that piece of information, then I think other things will start falling into place as far as, it'll help you do more long-term planning then. But understand, you may do that and in two years still not have approval for a FEMA building, at the time that you need to have that money spent.
Yeah, that just allows you into the application.
That just gets you in, that just gets you in the window.
Did they give you any parameters on the application process?
No, all, all I know is last time, well, that was a, a month ago. All I know is last time, we, we've submitted an application twice since even the one that we've had. Both of them were denied. One was a seventy-five-twenty-five, that was a ninety-ten, right? And it took at least a year to get the no on the ninety-ten, after we submitted the budget application. So they, they don't necessarily do things quickly.
If, no, go ahead. Well, I just wondered if, uh, if, if you thought we could get an answer on a seventy-five-twenty-five faster than that. I don't know what their, what their grant cycle is at this point.
Yeah, I don't know. I mean, I, I can call School Coggin and find out what, what that process is, but I'm still hesitant to commit to it until we find out what happens with S R three.
Well, I mean, I, I don't know what you mean by commit to it. We can apply and not take it.
Well, that's true.
One way or the other, we can go, yeah, we've applied, but.
Yeah, and then we change minds, because at the end of the day, if they approve, it's gotta come back to the board and the board's gotta say, yeah, hey.
Yeah.
And since it takes a year anyway.
And, and if it, even if it takes a year and we only got another year to spend eight hundred thousand, once you got approval, you can spend eight hundred thousand really fast. I mean, all you gotta, all you gotta do is get your architects in there.
I mean, I don't think it's a discussion, it's a, it's a need, it's something we need in the district and if we do in fact get the money, the S R three money, um, I, I'm, I'm in favor for building one sooner than later.
Building one what?
Like a training facility, but moving in, you know, and it was all set by the administrators, they've got what they need to move forward and, you know, I don't know that throwing money, um, just throwing money into academia ma- makes it any better. And it's a, it's a need that the district has and it appears we might have the money. Um, that would be something we'd at least wanna get a plan, like Tony said, moving forward. Uh, get, get numbers or get dimensions or get something, a location, get a plan moving forward with it.
Dean, I, I was gonna ask, we were talking about that, and this is before, you talked about the four million dollar FEMA shelter, was that just, was that just for the shell or was that, was that including when we were, we were talking about?
It didn't include, it didn't include the floor, the bleachers, as I recall.
So, was that included the extra part for the weight?
But I think it did include the, we had a weight room and a, and a.
Yeah, I don't think so. I think it was just the shell.
Ten thousand square foot.
Yeah, and I'm not sure it was quite four million, it was like three, three and a half.
But keep in mind, I bet you that, I bet you that cost by the time we.
It goes on about fifty percent from where we were at then.
Yeah, no doubt about that.
And then, and then if you're putting gym floor in it, you're putting bleachers in it and.
That all comes a hundred percent.
That's a hundred percent, so you're talking about more.
At some point, we need to build that facility. The, I'm talking about a middle school gym slash FEMA shelter. That, that's one, I, I believe that needs to be one of our long-term goals here.
Whether it's a lease purchase or is that a FEMA, I, I, I agree with that.
I do too.
I think it's, it's something that we need to look at down the road. I think that, you know, once we get past this, we have our money, you know, we don't have this debt hanging over our head, there's, we got a couple more years of some debt and stuff that we gotta, you know, I, I would be more in favor of looking down there and how much would that cost us? What would the lease purchase be?
So my thought is, if that's, if that's what the board thinks we need to do, so I'm kind of hearing that that's, you know, that, that, that's a, in our wishlist, that we would have a, a middle school gym slash weight facility, training facility, whatever, FEMA building. If we, if, can we not start down that road, apply for the FEMA grant, if we don't get it, still have that as a plan to build that facility? I know there's a great sense of urgency to get this training facility, get something going for a weight slash training facility. I've, we've been hearing about, just feels like a great sense of urgency there. Well, what about the MoDOT building as a temporary, until we find out if we, I know you guys are wanting to get going with a, with a weight facility tomorrow. Irregardless of whether we get a, a FEMA building, is there not something we can do for a, a year or two until we find out whether we can move forward with the, with a FEMA facility, gym, and, and put it all together at that point?
The basement, the basement of the FEMA, FEMA building?
Yeah, the only concern is it sits right below the, the children's behavioral therapy, so.
Wouldn't be a compliment, would it?
Well, if you crank up the music sky high, probably would be.
Is that necessary in a way?
I, I don't know.
You can't.
I don't think when we was lifting weights on the stage, we played the music very well.
I, I can, okay, so even if we, even if we don't get approved for the, for the FEMA building, we still think we need to build something, is that correct? Does anybody agree with that? Can we not?
When you say something, are you talking, are you referring to a gym or a weight room?
A gym, a big facility, a big, a, a FEMA gym, wait, all of it combined. Is that, I mean, we're gonna be paid out of our, our lease agreement in two years. We're gonna be pretty much debt-free. We're gonna be ready to start something. I, I'm, I'm, you know, I'm of the understanding and I don't get anywhere without borrowing money. So if, if, if we, if we don't continue that payment, we're gonna spend that money elsewhere and we're gonna forget that we're able to make those three hundred thousand dollar or whatever your payments. It's gonna be harder to get into a cycle of making those payments if we quit it for a few years. Is, is, do we not wanna look at going ahead and, and planning a facility there, whether we get reimb, any money from FEMA or not?
With or without FEMA?
Yes.
It depends on how much the payment would be, I guess, right? We're finding out.
Or, or how long, you know, I mean, yeah, it's gonna be a, a lengthy, a lengthy term to pay it out, but you know, that's, I, I don't know that we have any other building needs in the district other than a, a new middle school and that's not gonna happen for quite some time. And it, and then possibly, if we don't, if we don't get a, a FEMA reimbursement, that's when we start looking at a, a, make possibly a bond issue to help with that. Cause I think there's, there's, there's a want in the community for a FEMA shelter for our elementary kids, for a middle school gym and for a, a training facility. I think there's a want there. That may be something that we can get the community behind for a, for a bond issue in a couple of years.
And some districts have, I mean, in our conference have a middle school gym with a middle school training facility, middle school weight room. So are we talking about building a FEMA building with a high school weight room, like a middle school gym with a high school weight room or?
Are you asking me my opinion?
Yes.
I don't want a high school weight room. Whatever we build, whatever we build, I want it to be for the school district. I want it for the PE, I want it for the seventh grade volleyball girls, I want it for the football, uh, boys, I want it for the basketball. I want it for the P E, I want it for the seventh grade volleyball girls, I want it for the football, uh, boys, I want it for the basketball girls. I, 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 I'm not in favor of a, of a football-only facility.
That's not what, not what I'm saying. I'm just saying a junior high facility versus a high school facility.
No, I, I'm, I'm saying it's a school facility. It's a middle school gym with a school weight room, training room, uh.
That, that wasn't about my question. I mean, I, I'm just saying, on the FEMA structure, not, not, not anything to do with football or basketball, just where, you know, like Houston has a middle school gym with a middle school weight room. And all the middle schoolers use it. But that was my question. And then there's a high school facility.
I don't, I don't think we have the.
Why do we have to have two separate facilities?
I don't know, I'm just asking the question.
No, I don't, I don't, my thought is not a, a separate facility for the high school, uh, athletics, whatever you wanna call it.
Well, it depends on what you're talking about, you're talking about lifting weights during school, I mean, when you say.
Well, like, I know like at Houston, we just went to a volleyball game there, uh, last year. And they had a, they had a middle school, like a weight room, and the, the middle school athletes used it during school. That was, that was what it was.
And maybe I'm understanding you wrong, Scott, but I think, you know, we're, we're looking at replacing one weight room with a larger, better weight room. I don't think we're, in my opinion, I don't think we have the ability to split it and start differentiating on that. The question I have is, we looked at the FEMA building, and we looked at an attached weight room, is that correct? The front part of it was going to be a, to, to some degree.
Yeah, well, it was gonna be embedded inside of it or something.
Yeah, somehow it was gonna be in there. And I believe the, it was discussed possibly the blacktop would be an area that that could.
That would just be, that was just a thought.
A thought process, okay.
On a weight room, so not the, well, are you talking about the FEMA building or the weight room?
The FEMA building.
Yeah, it's gonna be the blacktop area that's by the playground, but between the lumber gym and, and elementary.
So, so my question is, is there, is there no way to have this plan of this future building? This thing that, you know, that we wanna see two years down the road? And not start a weight room training facility that's adjacent to that? I mean, what, why couldn't we build a?
Build the lean-to first, build the house later?
Right. I mean, what's, what's wrong with that?
I've done it.
We have the need here. This is our need, this is what we want, you know? I mean, I built a s- small house because that's what I needed, you know? I didn't build a, a mansion because that's what I wanted, you know? Why can't we kill both birds there? Why don't we build the weight room how we want it to fit into our bigger picture, our bigger plan?
Have a plan for the whole part and start on the small side.
Start on the small side, we can afford to do it, it's tangible, it happens in short order, it addresses the need. And we can still look forward into our, what we wanna do.
Well, the only thing is, is then we can't leverage that eight hundred thousand dollars on the bigger project.
Well, I mean.
But a part of it's done, yeah.
We may just have to pony up and borrow the money.
I, I think that's a great plan.
I mean, if we're, if, like Tony said, if we're losing lease purchases, I mean, we, we're basically setting ourselves, we're committing ourselves to a two or three-year plan where we wanna start a gymnasium. And I feel like we're all at least somewhat committed to saying, we'll do it with a bond issue, we'll do it with COVID money, we will do it with, uh, borrowing money if that's what we need to do. I mean, that's, that's kinda where I'm at with it, it's a need. These, you know, these guys know way more about sports than I do, but I mean, it's, it's been identified. I would love to see a FEMA shelters, you know, even if we decide it's a gymnasium. Let's build it in a way that our kids are safe while they're out there. You know, let's put those plans together, let's merge what we're trying to do.
Well, it's a physical education facility too, because as we mentioned, I mentioned about, I know there's middle school kids in that old gym. Same time they're trying to lift weights, so I mean, there's a need there, I think, probably for more space for physical education also. It's not just for athletics, what I'm saying, it's not just a, we're gonna build a gym to play ball in.
No doubt, they, they have a lot of problems scheduling everybody in for P E classes right now.
We have fifty kids, boys and girls mixed on the old gym floor.
Yeah, and they're lifting weights, but it's the same time.
Yeah, and, yeah, the poor weightlifting guys are up there while they're playing, you know, whatever.
Steal the bacon?
That is, but sure.
But we have.
We try to go away from that.
We have some plans for a FEMA building, this is submitted in our application a year or so ago. So, we have a place to start. Seems like to me that when we developed those plans, is we built a shell. And then we were gonna put some weight space inside of it. Which would make it very difficult to do what you're doing.
Right.
You know? So, I, I mean, if we're looking at doing a standalone, like, like you said, build a shed first, then we'll do the FEMA building later. I'm not sure I'd have to get that to the architect and say, hey, here's what we're thinking, is that even possible?
Sure, it's possible, it's costing extra.
What's that?
A lot of extra.
Well, it's gonna be a lot more than three and a half million. I mean, now, because that was a year or two ago.
I'm just saying, your total construction cost when you do it that way will be much higher. But, I mean.
Cause you gotta build.
But it solves the short-term problem as well, so.
The, the athletic facility does not have to be of the same type construction as a FEMA shelter.
I mean, it can be connected with a breezeway, right?
Well, I mean, it can, yeah, it can be a metal building.
Yeah.
That, and then the actual FEMA shelter butts right up to it with a doorway in between. You know, it does not have to be brick and mortar, with twelve-inch walls and big reinforced ceilings and all of that.
Yeah, because if we get the opportunity, we want FEMA to pay for the bulk of that, if, if we can, can do it that way.
So, I'm just trying to digest all these ideas that are going around. So, if that's the case, if that's the case. So now you're basically saying, let's go ahead and build the weight room shelter, the weight room at the site of where the proposed FEMA shelter would be.
I think you're looking to.
Two, three, four, five, or ten years down the.
Correct, or middle school.
But it's there. But then, then the dollars to pay for that, just the standalone weight room, is gonna be this?
Yes.
Eight hundred thousand.
I, I think.
Maybe not all of it, yeah.
I think if you look at a red iron building, I think if you look at some, some outside of the box, if we're not doing brick and mortar, I think it's highly possible.
Bigger than thirty by sixty though.
I don't know about that.
We, I think we can put a pretty good-sized facility together for eight hundred thousand dollars.
Oh, man, I think so.
I mean, we don't need to spend eight hundred thousand dollars on it.
How many square footage did we just build for seventy-seven thousand? Now granted, that's a, that's a wooden structure, it's par, it's parf-. We're not straying far from that idea.
No, no, I, I think that if it's like a metal building and the conversation we already had, I think that's, I think that's plenty enough to do it. But we're, I really need to have somebody come out and tell them, we want a three thousand square foot metal building. Not the eighteen footer that Colleen keeps talking about.
From eighteen to three thousand now.
Well, maybe, I thought.
Well, I said, okay, thirty-five.
We need to get an architect definitely highly involved in this, because we've gotta have a plan to, to be able to do that. We've gotta have a plan for how big this FEMA shelter gym needs to be. Because we've gotta leave room to set in. And then a weight, the training facility, weight facility, I don't know what we're gonna call this thing. But, um, but we've gotta have the plan to put, to where it fits together once we decide to build it.
If that's the direction boy, the board would like to go, cause I just need, do you tell me what you want me to do? I would get SAP Designs back out here, because they're the ones that did the original FEMA building. Not the one that's up there right now, but the one that we tried to get funded for two years in a row. So, if they can take that original concept and say, okay, let's, let's go backwards now. You know, eventually we're gonna go for that, but we just need to have space designated as a weight facility. How can you design that into this larger building? Not into it, adjacent to it, connected to it, whatever. That we can use that on a short-term basis until such time that we can figure out the other piece on the FEMA building. Is that kinda what you guys are, that's what I'm making?
I think so.
I think it's all in the planning, I mean.
Well, yeah, I agree, because right now, I don't even know how much that'll touch. Unless we got some cost estimates, which we really can't do a whole lot of anything, so.
I think we need to hear from our athletic people and, and administrators as far as how that's.
I don't see the athletic people, or?
Well, how that's gonna fit into their schedules, or how it's gonna benefit you. But I really think, you know, football coaches, athletic director, basketball coaches, P E teachers, need to have at least an opportunity to say something.
Sure.
Whenever we plan this thing.
As to the design, is that what you mean?
Yeah, yeah, as far as what, what goes in it and how they're gonna use it.
What size, what it looks like, where it's located?
Yeah.
Other than that.
So, what I would do now, then, as long as everyone's comfortable with that, if you, you gotta stand the cost of the architect for the planning, all right? Just.
They'll come.
Would be then, well.
That can come out of that eight hundred thousand dollars.
If we get it.
Yeah.
But I mean.
Yes, yeah, to answer your question, yeah, because that, that was even in the wording, to hire an architect and all that, so we'd have that covered. Uh, and if I did that, then I would put a group together. That would consist of administrators, uh, coaches, uh, athletic director, just to sit down and say, okay, what do you see this building looking like? Not just the weight room, the three thousand, thirty-five hundred square foot weight room.
Gets bigger every day.
All right, but a larger building that we want to be a FEMA building, but also a gymnasium. All right, and what all that looks like. We can start that process. I'm not making eye contact about it, but, but somebody ain't looking at me, so. Is that kinda of a wrap? Adam, you with me?
I was.
All right, I will contact them and put a group together and we'll start working on that, okay?
We'll just give you a job, didn't we?
You did, actually.
That would talk to our Tracy too.
Well, now that we got all the COVID stuff solved, I might as well look into building the building, so. All right. Okay. Was that it? I think that's it.
Are we on, on the same page as there?
More or less.
I'm a student.
I got a lot of heavy lifting tonight.
Okay. So, this deal's gonna be a while in the making.
Yes.
Are our athletic facility people gonna be happy with putting it off for this amount of time? Is that, are, are we gonna be okay with that?
Do we have a short-term solution?
Well, that's what I'm at.
Shorter, shorter than that.
Cause, cause I'm telling you, the sense of urgency has been really great. I'm gonna defer to the two on the end of the table.
Well, what you just, what was it Bill just said then? I, I must have.
Well, I mean, it's gonna take some planning, the point is, it's gonna take some planning, it's not gonna happen this year. I don't know that you'll get a building up before next year, I mean, that's, that's.
By the time you get the planning done, and then the board looks at it and you approve that, then you gotta go out to bid.
Right.
You know, so I mean, it could be, it could be fall before you start doing anything possibly.
Well, I mean, that's, that's just the way it is, right? I mean, you can't just.
Unless, unless we, unless we need a short-term fix.
A, a shorter term, like the MoDOT building.
So, is the MoDOT building basement on the, this side, that, that's, that's not?
Well, it's okay, except for the fact that I don't think the, those folks that are that occupation with that children's behavioral therapy's gonna go anywhere anytime soon. I think they're gonna be in there, their lease goes till two thousand twenty-three, I think.
Is it worth asking, Bev?
Uh, I've asked her about, I'll ask her again. I mean, she didn't sound like she's gonna wanna relocate him right now.
Is the north building where we went in, is that, is that out of the question?
That's pretty rough. And you have to heat the entire thing.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, plus it's on the top floor and.
It's, it's.
Yeah, it's a challenge.
However, Bev did say that, uh, she said, when the heat's on in there, it's on in the whole building.
Yeah.
And when the air's on, it's on in the whole building.
They have to heat the building.
That she couldn't, you know, it wasn't a, it wasn't heat this area and cool this area, it's, it's all another.
I, I would hope that if they're in there training, we don't need to put a lot of heat in there.
Well, yeah, I mean, I.
Yeah. And it's irking, is she?
Yeah. And she all can run away, she thought.
No, I don't think she's probably.
It was a possibility, so that may be a short-term, I mean, what we're doing this, I mean, I, you gotta know, you just don't say, hey, we're gonna do it, and we go do it. I mean, you get, I know as, you know, as a school district, you have steps you have to go through. I mean, I think Kenny was the person.
She felt pretty comfortable that we could get access to the north buildings about any time. But they had to install this piece of equipment, like six thousand bucks, cause they didn't have heat over there and movement over there. So, I don't know if they got that done yet or not, but.
I, I would say if Bev or says that's a doable thing, then that's up to, that's up to our, our people to decide, whether or not they wanna, that for a short-term, that's better than being over there in the, uh.
How many square foot is that one?
What?
How many square foot is the one we've got now?
What, five hundred maybe, I don't know what it is.
And you're wanting something seven times as big.
Well, I think it, it's bigger, it's bigger than five hundred, it's just, it's just.
Have some dreams, Colleen, come on.
No, but it's bigger than five hundred, but it's just, it's just oddly shaped is the problem.
Well, Bill can tell you, they went to look at the one there, it was eighteen hundred square foot, they went to look at the one west flank, it was sixty-five hundred square foot. We just thought, you know, maybe in the middle, thirty-five hundred, four thousand.
You're at four thousand. This sounds like the air conditioning, you just keep getting higher.
We just, we, but we stepped off that, that area on the north side, that upstairs, that had been, I bet that is at least five thousand square foot.
In the north building?
Yeah. And they looked, there was areas for like, them to change, or you know, to dress.
We might put them over there and they may not want out.
Yeah.
I think if there's a plan going forward that may, and then I think it would be much more likely that you would wanna go, maybe go over there if you know there's something that's gonna happen. That would just be my personal thought, but now I, that's not, I haven't talked to Robert or anybody else about.
Hey, hey, we can get everybody over there.
What's that?
Hey, you'll get everybody over there.
Make them run.
Put them on the air bus.
Make them run.
Or take, let the wagon, uh, pictures drop up.
I mean, it's training, it sounds like, it sounds like a good one.
Most weight training classes, they're guys lifting weights before it winds up anyway. Cause they got ninety minutes.
All right.
They got ninety minutes.
I think I know what.
Think you know what to do?
Well, I'll get a hold of bail and options for the short-term solution. And then I'll get SAP Designs and see if we can start talking about larger, about the smaller.
The middle-term solution.
The middle term. Well, the current term is the north building, the middle term is a structure for waiting, Greg, and right now, the long term is a FEMA building.
That's right.
And a gym.
You got a bill.
All right, I'm on it.
And we are planners, aren't we?
The next group will be very happy if you get all that planned before they get here.
Lay that on their plates, say.
A little bow on it.
Lock yourself on.
All right, uh, we need to set a date for an open hearing for funding of the H RAC project.
Yeah, and that, basically, uh, since it's not a performance-based contract, it's basically, it's a loan. State law requires us to have an open hearing on that. And you have, we have to publish the notice of the open hearing twice prior to the actual open hearing date. And so I'm kinda working on doing that, but we need to, I'm gonna ask you to set a date and time for the, for the opening hearing down in the action, action portion, just plan on doing it, uh, ten minutes prior to our January tenth board meeting.
And the purpose of this is to allow?
Just to allow c- feedback from the community. Anytime you're taking out a one point seven million, one point seven million dollar loan, they really think that you should probably get input from your community.
Potentially taking out one point seven.
Potentially.
No, no, we took it out.
No, yeah, but either way, no, it's a loan, we're still taking it out, we're just gonna pay it back. On, on the call date. We're still taking the loan out.
Which side?
Yeah, the question isn't whether or not we took the loan out, the question is are we gonna pay it back in a year or ten years? That's the question.
Any questions on that? All right, board filing date's open last Tuesday, December seventh, open through December twenty-eighth. If anybody interested, stop by Mandy's office and she will sign you up. Any comments from any guests tonight?
I'm not gonna talk about the weight room, I'm not here for that. I promise, I mean, you have heard my husband, you know what I'm dealing with. It's his classroom and I get it, cause I worked in that old gym. And I refuse to work in there. So, if it was nice, we were outside, Coach Jackson and Coach Mallor were gracious to let me have P E on the stage, cause I couldn't handle that. But that's not why, I just wanna say thank you guys. I just want to say thank you, guys. Thanks for hiring us. It's been a horrible two months, but I can't imagine being anywhere else. And I might give you an ultimatum, but I don't want to go anywhere. So, but thank you, you know, each card, each letter, gift, people that came through, that, that meant a lot to my, to me and my family. No one was prouder for Joel and I to be home than my dad. My friend had shared with me a visitation that she had got scared because my dad jumped off the bus, my dad's a big man, and was hollering at her, and she thought that something was wrong. And so she ran over, and it was the night after the board meeting. And he was so excited to tell her that you guys had hired Joel and that we were coming home. And so I just thank you for that. You know, last day, last game my dad got to see was Landry whoop up on him. And so I'm just thankful that we're here. And then the last thing I want to say, not about working, but I just want to say you have hired a gold mine, and she's going to hate this, but, and Tina Spencer. I'm, I'm going to tell you, when Munson called me and told me that you hired her, I knew change was coming and I knew some would embrace it and I knew some wouldn't. I've been doing this for twenty years. And I recently shared with a friend, we use a lot of sports analogies and quotes in our home. And I don't really care much for Nick Saban, but you have to respect what he does. And he hires the best and he gets the best athletes and he's got the best facilities. And he's just the, he wants the best for his kids. And that is what you have. She wants the best. And I love, we love Nick Saban, I shared this with a friend. High achievers don't like mediocre people and mediocre people don't like high achievers. And we use that quote a lot in our home. And you have a high achiever right there. And I love, since I've been back, I know you guys haven't been in the building, there's a lot of good things, I know all over. But being in the middle school, there's a lot of good things going on. She's let me buy, you know, with the money, equipment to do the, the middle school news. And she challenges us and I have never, and I've worked for both of you, but I've never had an admin come to me, even today, because my son is still concussed and didn't pass protocol, protocol. But I've never had an admin come to me and say, I'll watch your class. It's always, sorry, you find someone to watch your class and you can go to that appointment. She's said that multiple times when I've had to go to this for my dad or with Landry having these doctor's appointments. She meant it, she showed up today. I was five minutes from being there when my class got there and she was at my door. And so I don't know if you see that, but I love working for her and I, I mean, she, she knows I'm saying this. I just wanted to say it because being back is amazing, but when you like what you do and you like who you work for and you work for someone who has high expectations and they have those expectations because they want their kids to do well, it makes you like your job. And I was reading that you guys, you know, you're looking for a continuum, you know, our motto is continuous improvement and that is what you're getting in our building. We also use another phrase in our house a lot, and this is what I'm going with, but you've probably heard it, but my husband says a lot of these sports banquet. But one of the worst phrases you can say is it's always been done this way. And that is what you guys were talking about tonight. You've got to make changes. I don't know, I haven't been here long enough to know what y'all are doing. But when she came into that building, I knew change was coming and I knew some would embrace it, the high achievers, and I knew some wouldn't. But you guys know, you have to step on toes to be an admin and sometimes it's not a fun job, but she does it amazingly. So thank you for hiring her because it has made my time in that building a lot easier to know that if something happens and I can't find someone, she's got my back. And thank you guys for hiring us. It's good to be home.
Thank you. All right, items for action. It's been so long ago, I don't remember how the motion was going to go.
I think it was to pass it as presented.
A motion would be in order to.
Change as amended.
A motion being in order to approve the safe return in person and continuity of services planned as presented with the change, with changes effective immediately.
So moved.
Second. By Dean and a second by Adam. Is there any discussion on that? Everybody understands that kids will, that are quarantined will be back tomorrow and we'll go with just how it was written out until January when we revisit that. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Very good. We need to set a date for an open hearing on the funding of the HVAC project. A motion being in order to set that hearing on Monday, January tenth at six fifty P M. Brent and a second.
Come on, Matt. You're always the second.
By Matt. Any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Very good. Anything else for open session tonight? I would like to say, I think all of the board got a jacket here tonight. I appreciate that, and I'm sure the rest of the board does too, so thank you very much. Anything else for open? Receive a motion to go into executive session.
So vote.
By Dean and a second.
Second.
I'll do that by roll call.
Aye.
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 And aye, very good. Thank you all for coming tonight.
Thank you, guys, for sitting through all that.
We are now back in the open session. I would receive a motion to adjourn to go home. That's my Brent Colley.
Exactly.
Who's that?
Scott.
Scott. All right, we're i.
Hi.
I'm opposed and stay here. Eleven oh five, it's time to go home guys.
That's on me though, ladies. Scott has a second.
Really, Will?
I got it, man. I got it. Alright.
You can turn our computer off now.
Alright.